This January 27, 2022, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence and a performance of the National Anthem by the Madison High School Madison Madrigals under the direction of Claire Rowan.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beautiful. Thank you. Agenda Item 3.03, Announcements. I would like to recognize Dr. Mitch Sutterfield, City School Board from Fairfax, who is with us this evening. Welcome.[256.26][256.26](APPLAUSE). If you'd like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information may be found at the back of the auditorium or on the website at fcps.edu/schoolboard/boarddocs. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast on Channel 99 and livestream on the website at fcps.edu/tv/ch99. A reminder: A mask that covers the nose and mouth must be worn at all times by everyone in attendance. If you have a mask exemption or if you are in need of a mask break, please take advantage of our overflow room set up in the gymnasium. Ms. Kies-Gamara has submitted a written request to virtually attend this evening's meeting due to a personal conflict. All those in favor of allowing Ms. Kies-Gamara to virtually attend this meeting, please raise your hands. That is unanimous. Agenda Item 3.04, National Career and Technical Education Month Recognition. The Board will invite each recognition recipient and their supporters to come forward for a photo with the Board after the reading of all of our recognitions. I call on Ms. Maron.
Career and Technical Education, or CTE, Month is a public awareness campaign held every February to celebrate the achievements and accomplishments of such programs nationwide. This year's theme is "Celebrate Today, Own Tomorrow," and it raises awareness of the innovation and excellence that exists in career and technical education programs such as those in FCPS, as well as the crucial role that this education has in readying students for careers and contributing to economic success. According to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, 18 of the 20 fastest-growing occupations within the next decade will require career and technical education. Career and technical education prepares both youth and adults for a wide range of careers, requiring varied levels of education, including high school diploma, post-secondary certificate, and two- and four-year college degrees. Fairfax County Public Schools has programs that exemplify career and technical education with offerings that include business and information technology, such as accounting, management, and software development; family and consumer services, such as early childhood development and restaurant services; health and medical sciences, including emergency medical technician, pharmacy technician, and veterinary sciences; military science and JROTC; marketing; engineering and technology, such as aerospace science and architectural drawing; and trade and industrial education, including automotive technology, electrical construction and engineering; cosmetology; criminal justice; photography and TV and media production. Through these opportunities, students are able to get a sense of careers they may wish to have and understand the necessary steps to become a professional in that discipline. Thank you to all our career and technical education educators and staff who help students realize a portrait of a graduate outcomes and ensure students are college and career-ready.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Agenda Item 3.05, National School Counseling Week Recognition. I call on Ms. Tolan.
Thank you. National School Counseling Week 2022, School Counseling Better Together, will be celebrated from February 7 to the 11th, 2022. This is to focus public attention on the unique contribution of school counselors. National School Counseling Week, sponsored by the American School Counselor Association, highlights the tremendous impact school counselors can have in helping students achieve school success and plan for a career. National School Counseling Week is always celebrated the first full week in February. Fairfax County Public Schools employs close to 700 school counseling professionals, including school counselors, directors of student services, and college and career specialists. These professionals are committed to preparing students to become lifelong learners and productive members in a global society with a focus on social-emotional wellness, academic success, and college and career readiness. Thank you to all of our school counseling professionals for the tremendous work they do. As part of National School Counseling Week, it is an honor to congratulate Kathryn Teague, the Director of Student Services at Kathryn Johnson Middle School, who was recognized as the FCPS Outstanding School-Based Leader for 2021. Congratulations, Kathryn.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Agenda Item 3.06, Asha Geothi Resolution, and I will turn the gavel over to Ms. Seizmoreheiser.
I call on Ms. Bukarski.
Thank you. Whereas Asha Geothi, a volunteer-based global nonprofit organization based in Chantilly, is dedicated to supporting the community through healthcare and education initiatives and has given over $250,000 to the Fairfax County Public Schools. And whereas, distributed as part of Asha Geothi's Educate Innovate Initiative, the grants provide funding for the schools to enhance their technology, education, build innovation labs, and maker spaces, inspiring our students to be the trailblazers of tomorrow. Through the grants and the opportunities that they provide, they hope that all children will be inspired to design, experiment, build, and invent while believing that anything is possible. And whereas, through its annual 5K run-walk, Asha Geothi encourages community interest and support of technology education for area youth, matching and distributing the registration fees to the schools and representatives participating in the event, an initiative that resulted in thousands of dollars in donations to our Fairfax County Public Schools. And whereas, the Educate Innovate Program has given $106,000 to build the Innovation Lab at Chantilly High School in 2018. The lab offers students access to state-of-the-art 3D printing, audiovisual technology and recording, take-apart technology, writable walls, robotics, and much more. And whereas, Rocky Run Middle School was a grand recipient of $60,000 in 2019 to build the Maker Space, allowing middle-school kids to create, learn, and play together in the new inspiration studio. Asha Geothi has also donated a total of $18,000 to Fairfax County Public Schools in 2021, including two individual technology grants to Kathryn Johnson Middle School and Little Run Elementary School. And whereas, through its grants to schools in the Commonwealth and throughout the country and the world, Asha Geothi demonstrates a remarkable commitment to fostering the next generation of technology inventors and innovators. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board extends its deepest gratitude and appreciation to Asha Geothi for their valuable contributions to enhance the education of students in Fairfax County Public Schools to help them pursue 21st-century career opportunities. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Cohen. Ms. Bukarski, would you like to speak to your resolution?
I will briefly speak to it. It really is my distinct pleasure tonight to be able to offer this resolution to honor all of the investments that Asha Geothi has made in our community. And I'm extremely thankful to their founders, the Pooley family, which are Sully District neighbors and parents to FCPS graduates, for their ongoing commitment to our students. Their nonprofit, which is dedicated to offering educational opportunities to underserved children as well as healthcare in some parts of the world, has done incredible work in India and right here in our community. And this funding of innovative STEM opportunities for our students who may not have otherwise had access to them is changing lives. And I've been able to attend, actually a couple times, the 5K that they have every September, and, you know, it has grown to be a national event where they have 5K runs and walks throughout the country to be able to do the work they do. And I could just tell you that you don't often meet community members and partners who come to you and say, you know, "Give us more, bring us more." We are looking for opportunities to invest in our children and in our community, in the schools, because we believe that our community has given so much to us that we feel it is an imperative to give back. So I'm eternally grateful for all their partnership and everything they have done in our school system.
Ms. Cohen, would you like to speak to your second?
I would, thank you. Getting to visit the Innovation Labs at Chantilly and Rocky Run Middle School was just incredibly cool, but even cooler than getting to try VR out myself was getting to watch all of the kids get to experience each of the things that the Innovation Lab brought to them, and I can't wait to see what Kathryn Johnson and Little Rocky Run do with the generous contributions that they're getting. I just want to say my appreciation again to the Pooley family. We need more people like you. Your generosity is definitely helping build our future, one innovator at a time. So thank you so much, and we're glad to get to do this resolution tonight.
Are there any other board members who'd like to speak? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? That motion passes with 11, and Ms. Kies-Gamara did not record a vote.
I couldn't get my hand up.
Oh, I apologize, Ms. Kies-Gamara. That motion passes unanimously.
Excellent. I now like to invite the Asha Geothi staff, Fairfax City School Board Vice Chair Dr. Mitch Sutterfield, Chantilly High School Principal Scott Poole, IC Rocky Run Principal Amy Goodlow, and any other Asha Geothi supporters to please join us in the front for a photo with the Board. I ask my colleagues to please remain in front of the dais for the next two photos as well.
If you are here this evening in support of National Career and Technical Education Month, please join the Board at the dais for a photo. If you are here this evening in support of National School Counseling Week, we ask that you please join the Board at the dais for a photo.
Agenda Item 4.01, Community Participation. Speakers must limit their remarks to no more than two minutes in length. At the conclusion of two minutes, the microphone or video will be turned off. School Board members will be listening but not responding to individual speakers. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as a capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Comments targeting, criticizing, or attacking individual students are not permitted during public meetings. Complaints regarding school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student or school-based employee. Additionally, speakers should be respectful and observe proper decorum in their statements, avoiding profanity, inappropriate gestures, shouting, and comments that run counter to the spirit and letter of the school division's nondiscrimination policy. All statements should be directed to the School Board, and speakers should remain at the podium until concluding their remarks. In-person speakers should wear a mask when addressing the Board. As a reminder, speaker substitutions are not permitted. A speaker may not yield their time to another individual before or during their remarks. Shouting and outbursts from this audience will not be tolerated. But we are grateful for those who have come before us today to speak, and we thank you for your cooperation.
Our first speaker is Sarah Doane.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak and share my perspective as a Jewish student in Fairfax County Public Schools. My name is Sarah Doane. I'm a senior at George C. Marshall High School, and I'm a founding member of the Student Equity Team there. I want to start off by mentioning that today is Holocaust Remembrance Day, making my statement today even more relevant. As a senior, I've had four years of debating whether or not I should attend school on Jewish holidays. In years prior, I made the decision to attend school to avoid the stress of missing classes and possible tests. This year, my senior year, I made the decision to attend services because of the newly implemented religious observance days. Rosh Hashanah was the first observance day on the calendar, so I thought the teachers would follow through, and I wasn't going to miss anything important. I was wrong. Teachers did not follow the rules. While some of my teachers were respectful of the rules, many teachers forgot or disregarded the terms the Board had put in place. I came back to school confused and stressed as to which teachers had followed the rules and which had not. This experience was more stressful than missing a typical day of school. While I cannot speak for my classmates, I can speak about what I have observed. I've seen countless students continuing to make the decision to come into school because of the additional stress observant days have on students. Why should I, along with other non-Christian students, have to make these hard decisions? Why is it that the school system prioritizes Christian students and makes others feel less valued? How could I explain to a young elementary school student that they're seen as less important than their Christian classmates? While I understand the intent of the School Board was to create a more religiously inclusive calendar, the teachers did not comply. In order to create a truly inclusive academic environment, the Board should implement a calendar that is not only accommodating in theory, but is also accommodating in practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Zachary Ginsburg.
Hi. My name is Zach Ginsburg. I am a senior at Lake Braddock and a participant of the Jewish Community Relations Council Student Program. Our goal is to destigmatize and teach Judaism to teens in the DC, Maryland, Virginia area. For the second year in a row, I have worked with youth and religious leaders to promote Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Eid, and Diwali as school holidays. As a reformed Jew, I started to participate in services during the High Holy Days. We celebrate the Jewish New Year and the Day of Atonement, which are the holiest days of the Jewish calendar. The zero days for religious observances do not work and do not give us the equity that minority faith religions asked for last year. It was a slight movement in the right direction, but it was not enough. This year, I was still in a tough position of deciding between my religion and my holiday. This year, you have an opportunity to make a difference for the Jewish, Muslim, Hindu, Jain, and Sikh students. It is too late for me, but I hope to make a change for the students coming after me. Making the proposed holidays school holidays will in turn help me, but also other staff and students who feel strongly connected to their community and faith. Arlington Falls Church, Loudoun, Prince William, Alexandria School Districts have the major Jewish holidays, Eid and Diwali, as days off in their calendars. We need to better reflect not just our county-wide diversity, but also the diversity we see in these neighboring counties. Advancing equity for minority faith students and employees will benefit the entire northern Virginia community. Need to focus on our goals of creating and maintaining a diversified workforce that reflects the diversity of the student body. So please vote for the proposed calendar for the 2022-2023 school year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christine Mason.
Good evening. I'm sorry for the technology glitch here, but it's my pleasure to speak to you tonight. I am a longtime resident of Vienna. I've lived here with my husband for over 30 years. I'm also a grandparent. I have several grandchildren in schools in Fairfax County. I'm here in support of the current superintendent and staff, the teachers, the counselors. And I have to just say first, kudos to you for what you've been doing. So I want to express appreciation and also want to say that as you go forward, let's keep on the same course. I'm an educational psychologist, and I look at what's going on in our world today and all the trauma everyone has experienced. And I have to really applaud what Fairfax has done. Part of my work is studying trauma and doing what we can to alleviate the trauma of kids. So we must make sure that we have ways to weave social-emotional learning throughout the school day. Fairfax has done a good job, is doing a really good job in this area. It must be allowed to continue. Furthermore, I'm very concerned about truth-telling and equity. And if you look across the country, many, many, many schools and districts are currently revising curricula. We have teacher teams who are looking at their curriculum and making sure that they're doing what they can so they tell the truth about the past. Slavery happened. We have had discrimination, and we need to do what we can so that we tell an accurate story. I'm appalled at what our Virginia governor has done. And I want to say, when it comes to masks even, here we have Fairfax County, a good example of a district that's trying to do the right thing.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Erica Reynolds Clayton.
Good evening. My name is Erica Clayton, and I'm the mother of two FFC students. I am also among the majority of parents in Fairfax County who support efforts to keep mask mandates in place. Reasonable parents support mask mandates, especially right now during the Omicron surge because we are not medical specialists, and we know it. We are humble enough to rely on experts, and the leading experts in our country on disease control and prevention and children's physical and mental health right now are the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics, both of which strongly support universal masking. We know that people posting Facebook memes, non-peer-reviewed articles, and YouTube videos are not doing medical research, and we are not about to entrust our children's health to those people. Reasonable people believe that students need to be in school, yet daily we're opening our emails and seeing requests for substitute teachers. We are seeing in real time that our school system is stressed because personnel are at home. at home sick or taking care of family members thanks to Omicron. We realize that multi-layered protections, including masks, has kept every single Fairfax County school open every single day this year, and we want it to stay that way. None of us want our children to have to wear masks, but reasonable people teach their children that life is not always fair. Our kids know that being a member of a community sometimes means sacrifice. Every generation is faced with its own unique challenges that cause its members to sacrifice. If this pandemic is the greatest challenge that our children's generation will face, it hardly seems that wearing a four-inch square of material to protect the health of themselves, their friends, their teachers, and others, and thereby keeping schools open, is too much to ask. Thank you for acting reasonably and responsibly on behalf of the children of FFC.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stacy Langton. Our next speaker is Stacy Langton.
Terry McAuliffe let his mask slip when he said, "Parents have no say." It was the turning point. We, the parents, awakened and handed him defeat. Obama was right. Elections have consequences. Dr. Braybrand praised students this week for their compliance. But at the same time, FCPS itself gives no compliance with the governor's authority. They mask their retaliation under the guise of protecting our kids. You don't protect them. You demonstrated that by providing our kids with perversion and calling it beneficial. Now you're stifling children with indefinite mask-wearing. Look at the harm you've done. Kids are failing, speech delayed, depressed, and suicide rates soared. The little ones have never even seen their classmates' smiles. Mandates are not the principles this nation was founded upon. Our forefathers came here to escape tyranny. They would have tarred and feathered all of you. We're not going to be patient with tyrants. We're not going to wait patiently while FCPS gives parents the middle finger. You all should be fired for your retaliation. Refusing to follow an executive order in Virginia has a one-year jail sentence. How about it, officers? Going to do anything about these lawless, lawbreakers sitting before you? Time to dust off the history books and see about the remedies for this lawless school board. Parents all over America need to fight corruption in our public schools. Stop the woke agenda of perversion and tyranny. Better yet, stop calling it woke. Call it what it is: communism. We want your communist boot off the necks of our children.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anthony Taylor. Our next speaker is Anthony Taylor.
I do want to remind everyone that we are asking you to please stay quiet. It is a business meeting. We do want to hear all of our speakers. Thank you.
Anthony Taylor. Our next speaker is Carrie Lucas.
Across Virginia right now, adults are gathering in gyms, bars, and clubs and laughing together maskless. Yet my five kids spent all day today, eight hours, in masks in Fairfax County Public Schools. My first grader has never been inside his school without a mask. He's never had a chance to smile at his friends or hear his teacher's unmuffled voice, and it is outrageous and ridiculous. Today, we know that the risks of Omicron for children are minimal. Public health officials know that the masks that you require do not work against this variant and have called them useless facial decorations. Of course, parents have different assessments about these risks. That's fine. Some worry about viruses more than they do the mental health damage that these masks are doing to our kids. And Governor Youngkin respects that. He respects parents' rights to make choices for our children. He gave parents like me the right to mask out of your forced masking. Why then, when I went to my friendly local elementary school to exercise that right, did some poor, kind woman have to tell me that my kids were suspended? I know she didn't want to do that. I know that most of the teachers know this is lunacy and cruel to kids. Why are you putting them in this position? Fairfax spends $15,000 about a kid per each year. You've gotten hundreds of millions of dollars in emergency funds, and Virginia still has three billion in unspent school relief funds. Instead of that money going to you so you can initiate lawsuits and hire security guards and press aides to keep tax-paying citizens from seeing what's happening in the schools, it's time you allowed that money to follow each child. Parents should be given control of that per pupil spending so that we can find educators who respect us and so that we don't have to come here begging to you to have some decision-making. This week is known as National School Choice Week, and it's time for Virginia to give parents like me the ability to just leave this school system that very clearly doesn't want us anyway.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Missy Pratt. Missy Pratt.
We do want to remind everyone, we do have a mask policy. We are in our schools. We are modeling for our students. Please help us follow our policies. Go ahead, ma'am. Thank you.
I'm glad they are happy and having a good time. Kids are resilient even under sadistic situations. God bless them. And may God have grace on those that make these decisions to force masks on our children. Forced masking has a multibillion-dollar payoff for every one of these school systems. So of course, they'll keep the bogus narrative going. Why would the school systems turn down billions and billions of dollars when all they have to do is force a little child to keep a mask on their face? FCPS was awarded $188.6 million in S R III funds and in August released a chart with the proposed spending plan of those funds. The S R III fund is, quote, "is to help safely reopen and sustain the safe operation of schools and address the impacts of COVID-19 on the nation's students by addressing students' academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs." No, you are not. You are not addressing students' academic, social, emotional, emotional, and mental health needs. No, you are not. You are making millions and millions and millions of all of our tax dollars, even if it comes from the federal government, it's got to come from somewhere. It comes from us by forcing our children to smother their faces with layers of paper and cloth that do not block the SARS-CoV-2 virus. Period. This makes no sense. Stop the distribution of funds to force our kids to wear masks immediately. Immediately. This is your taxpayers talking. Immediately.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kyle Dalzimer.
My name is Kyle Dalzimer. I'm a proud alumni of Annandale, Holmes, North Springfield, but to my students, I'm just Mr. Dalzimer. When I finished college and came back to Fairfax this year, teachers from around the county, predominantly in the arts, reached out to me and asked if I could start subbing, whether it was because they remembered my work onstage while I was at Annandale or they were just in such desperate need for subs that they'd reach to anyone. I don't know. I applied and was hired and have been proudly teaching as a substitute for months now. In addition to subbing, I'm also the primary caregiver to my immunocompromised grandmother who has COPD. When the governor announced the ban on mask mandates, I became worried, not for myself and my safety, but for hers. If I get COVID, I will probably be fine. But if I contract COVID and then give it to her, she will almost certainly die. So I had to turn down a job this week because my grandmother was leaving the hospital to come stay with me until she was strong enough to return home. I found out later that job had been covered by one of the attendance ladies at that school. I'm here to thank the board for their strength in doubling down on this mandate, and students agree. On Tuesday, reports showed only 24 of 180,000 FCPS students showed up and didn't wear masks. Being in classrooms with them every day, I can tell you firsthand, they understand that masks aren't just for them, but they're for everybody in their school community. Because of the strength of this school board, I and countless other teachers from around the county feel comfortable returning to teach without the fear of putting those that we care for at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marguerite Weiss. Marguerite Weiss.
My name is Marguerite Weiss. I'm a resident of Fairfax County and the mother of an elementary student. I want to thank the school board for the hard work you are doing to keep our children safe and in school and for this opportunity to speak in favor of maintaining the current FCPS mask mandate in accordance with CDC guidance. Masks are a critical component of the strategy that keeps our schools open for in-person learning. There is ample scientific evidence that masks help protect children, teachers, and staff from contracting COVID in schools and from bringing COVID home to their families. While COVID is thankfully usually mild in children, Virginia reported over 1,000 pediatric hospitalizations and 12 pediatric deaths from COVID through January 15th, including one child who died from COVID in the first two weeks of this year. One preventable death is one death too many. My son is healthy and vaccinated, so perhaps I do not need to worry too much about him. But that does not absolve me, however, of responsibility to consider the needs of other children, those with underlying conditions or who cannot receive the vaccine. All children deserve to go to school in as safe an environment as possible. For all but a small number of children, wearing a mask is safe and at most an inconvenience. My son is an eight-year-old child, and he understands this. He doesn't enjoy it, but he wears a mask to keep his friends safe and to protect people who are more vulnerable than he is. We want our children to develop good character, to understand that having rights and being free does not mean that we can selfishly do whatever we want without regard for others. As adults, we need to set the example. So once again, thank you to FCPS and the school board for following CDC guidance and standing up for all of our children.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nate Creach. Nate Creach. Our next speaker is Anne Marie Swope. Our next speaker is Jonathan Ottke.
Dear members of the state school board, I want to thank you for your service and your steadfastness during this time of COVID. I am here to speak up in support of masks until we have COVID much more under control and for continuing to teach the truth about our history. My wife is a teacher, and masks help protect her, her students, and our unvaccinated grandkids who are too young to get vaccinated. We are doing everything we can to keep them safe. Masks, especially now during this COVID wave, is helping keep the schools open, which is important for the students' mental health and socialization. Without them, the schools would probably have to close because so many teachers and school bus drivers would be sick. As it is, we are only making it because a lot of people are doing double shifts and covering for others. The history of Virginia has some of the lowest lows and highest highs. We invented slavery in the U.S. and also the Declaration of Independence and large parts of the Constitution. This Constitution, then, allowed we, the people, to dismantle slavery, segregation, and allow to get the votes to other people. To not tell the truth would deny students the excitement and knowledge of what we have achieved. It's that knowledge that lets us understand what truly makes the U.S. great and what we can do to improve our future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is George Becerra.
Good evening, Chairman Pekarsky, school board members, Dr. Braybrand, and leadership team. My name is George Becerra, the co-chair of the Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee. I would like to talk about two things tonight. The first thing is the superintendent search, and the second is the equity policy. With the first item, thank you Chairman Pekarsky for attending MSAOC's January meeting where you took questions from our members concerning this topic. Some of the things that you hear right now are repetitious of what you heard that evening. This is more to the other board members. First item for recommendation, we'd like to thank the boards of the past quarter century for including MSAOC on the community panel. As things have improved in this process over the years and decades, there still is room for improvement. With that said, as FCPS and school board have changed their recommendation patterns for hires for leadership team members and school board members, we also expect the same for this go-around. On the same process as your staff aids, as your hires, it has been greatly improved. We recommend at least the same type of process that is done for those, with the added-on feature of an extra day for the final day of an employment opportunity. With that said, we have the great opportunity this Monday to start that conversation with your consultant from GR Consulting. Ask them the question of where is the community panel in this process? How do they incorporate them, or what advice are they taking from you? At the same token, we respect your individuality, your constituency that you represent. With that said, though, recommendation from MSAOC is for the community panel to give two top preferences, not in order, but two recommendations who they think. But that is, that is more than just your pros and cons list, but what the community say. From the community panel, also elect a community member, like the board of supervisors do for their commissions and task force, so the community member can talk to the media when the process is asked about if community input was made. On the second and last piece is the equity policy.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Faquett. Our next speaker is Joseph Harrison. Our next speaker is Bernadille.
I'm here as a private citizen and a FCPS parent. I'm here to support the school board's decision on masking. When everyone's goal is to maintain in-person learning, our best chance at sustained success is using common sense, multi-layered mitigation strategies. I am really concerned about the suggestion that masking is an individual choice. Increased virus in the air from unmasked kids decreases the efficacy of masks. We know this. Masks are not impervious. They're very, very effective, and they're more effective when everybody's using it. Asserting that masking is an individual choice is no less absurd than suggesting that indoor smoking is an individual choice. It impacts other people. For the school board, I know that until this issue is adjudicated in the courts, I know that's where it's headed, enforcing masking is going to be tough. I hope you will support your teachers and administrators in being consistent on that because if parent choice becomes the premise for students bypassing the rules, then you lose standing for enforcing any of the other rules that you have to promote good sanitation, health, or basic decorum in our school settings. There's been a lot of talk about freedom and choice, but there's been a lot less discussion about the responsibilities that come with that. For me, as a parent, I think one of my jobs is to instill in my kids integrity, a little fortitude, and a sense of responsibility as a citizen. I want my kids to know that their comfort isn't more important than the well-being of their classmates, especially classmates who have health issues or go home to family members, including parents or younger siblings who do, and have a higher risk of serious disease or illness from COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cameron Ward. Cameron Ward. Cameron Ward.
Hi, I'm Cameron. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the calendar. Our calendar should be operationally compatible with the end of each grading period. The cultural observance days, they tend to encourage some of the older students to skip because they know they won't miss much. I heard Ms. McLaughlin say the other day that the board was not ready to vote on the calendar tonight. I think she's right. So the FCPS middle and high schools, they operate on an A-B calendar with four classes, meeting on A-days and B-days. The end of the quarter is hectic for both students and teachers. The number of instructional days for each class between extended breaks and the end of the quarter is very important. Let's look at the January calendar, where there are two holidays, two cultural observance days, and one early release between winter break and the end of second quarter. In the proposed calendar, both of January's cultural observance days and the half-day occur in the same block. That means that one block of classes will have nine instructional days before the quarter ends and the other block will have five. Throw in a couple of well-placed snow days and January's classes are an operational disaster at the middle and high school levels. I propose making one of those cultural observance days a holiday and ending the quarter a week later on Friday, the 27th. We run into a similar problem in April. It doesn't serve the students well to give them a week off for spring break and then return with three and a half days of school and end the quarter. Since spring break is no longer tied to Easter, it seems you would move it to April 10th through 14th and end the quarter on April 6th. That way, our children can end the quarter successfully. This calendar is also the longest school year I've ever seen because you either start it before Labor Day or end before Memorial Day. The short summer also makes military moves, trips to see extended family, and college drop-offs very tricky to schedule. Please honor our military community by not shortening summer.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. Agenda item 4.02, Superintendent Matters. I now call on Dr. Braebrand.
Thank you, Chairman Pekarski. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, members of the board and leadership team. First of all, I just want to thank everybody who just shared their feedback here at Community Participation. I know it's a super cold evening and for everybody to come out and be involved. And I continue to ask, as I did at the town hall earlier this week, for our community to stay engaged and stay involved. And I want to thank our community for the support that we have been given, our teachers, our principals, all of our schools this week. I recognize that there were and are still some difference opinions about masking in our schools, but I need you to know that our community has responded to our FCPS message of stay the course. 99.9% of our students are hearing our message and staying the course with universal mask wearing for students and staff as we return this week. And I couldn't be prouder of our students and our entire FCPS family. We will continue to move forward and continue to use medical guidance as we move through this pandemic. I do recognize that folks do want to see those off-ramps for a time when masking can be optional, but now is not the time. But I do promise that we will continue to work with our health authorities to develop those off-ramps that I know we all want and look forward to as this surge subsides. I also just want to take a moment this evening to tell you that I am so pleased to announce that we are holding our FCPS Special Education Conference on March 26th. It's our 17th annual presentation of this convention, and I'm so grateful to our Department of Special Services for organizing the event. It is open to FCPS staff, parents, and community members, and each year the conference draws an audience of parents, educators, administrators, pre-service teachers, and community members. And really, we'll hear the latest research, strategies, and trends for the education of students with learning challenges and special needs and disabilities. So there's more information on this event and how to register at our FCPS website, and I really hope everybody will check that out. We have a lot of exciting activities and events going on and coming up as we end the winter and approach the spring. And speaking of winter, we do know that there is a little bit of weather for late tomorrow. We're going to continue to monitor weather conditions, and we do hope with the latest weather that we'll be able to continue to operate school on normal operations, not only tomorrow, but throughout the weekend. We're going to do our very best to, of course, keep safety in mind for our students and staff, but we're very hopeful that we'll continue to be able to have normal operations throughout the weekend. Thank you all very much, and thank you for giving me a chance, Chairman Pekarski, for these remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Braebrand. Agenda item 4.03, Student Representative Matters. I call on Mr. Chowdhury.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. I hope everyone has had a wonderful past couple of weeks. I know it's been a little bit crazy, but this past weekend, I did have the honor of attending the National School Board Association's Equity Symposium in Washington, D.C. And so I got to meet hundreds of school board members from across the country who are really passionate about the work that they're doing, and they're really eager to ensure that through their office, they're serving the needs of students. So my friend Boomi and I from Anarundel County, Boomi is also a student board member, we were able to go out together and talk to a lot of adult school board members about how they can work to really engage student voice in policy decisions within their districts. And it was really enjoyable to have those kinds of conversations because I think there were some adults out there who didn't even know that student representatives on boards were a thing. And so getting to introduce them to that concept and really talk about actively seeking out student perspectives and then engaging them, making sure that we can be civically engaged with those who oversee our school systems, was really incredible. Another fun fact that I think did shock, once again, a lot of the adults was that Boomi is actually the only student board member in the country who has full voting rights as a student board member. That means not just on things that come to the table at her board, but that also means that she serves on committees and that, yes, she's even in the room for student discipline issues, right, for faculty-related things. And if you talk to any of the adults from Anarundel County, I think you'll hear that it doesn't necessarily come with some of the caveats or worries that a lot of adults may think of. And so there are times where, in practice, having that perspective of someone who lives and breeds our school system every day can still really make a big impact. And given the name, as an equity symposium, we got to have some really open and honest conversations about equity, and we had to be willing to really take a deep dive at understanding the factors at play that affect kids across our districts. Additionally, we really got to talk about how the right thing is almost always going to be controversial, but that shouldn't stop us from doing what is in the best interest of students. And so really focusing on uplifting everyone was huge. And so I had a discussion along similar lines later that weekend with my friend Jamie, who she is a student board member in a suburb of Sacramento in California. And one thing that came up during our multi-hour conversation was that suburban districts that look like ours tend to really enjoy talking about equity, but it's another to really act on equity and make sure that that vision is realized within our schools, right? And so it can't be this reactionary approach of, oh, we are just going to do what we were going to do before, but we're going to put an equity lens on it. There have to continue being active steps to address opportunity gaps and the needs for critical supports, especially in underserved communities. As I like to think about it, in the dictionary, equity is a noun, but in our school systems, equity should be a verb. And as we continued on with that, we got to talk about some of the segregation of racial and economic lines we witnessed in many of our school districts, both just within individual school communities, which I think can largely be tied to the fact that schools often tend to be segregated because our communities tend to be segregated. But one thing I also heard come up, which really piqued my interest as someone who has been invested in this for a long time, is the structure of advanced academics programs, not just here, but people in districts throughout the country were bringing this up. Here in Fairfax, we put kids in boxes based on an IQ test that they take when they are seven years old. And there are ways to get in later on when kids are a little bit older and have had time to really mature as learners and as people, but a student's family has to have the knowledge and the financial resources in order to get them privately retested, or they have to have the time to sit and make an appeal in their school community. So that accessibility piece can be a huge issue. Additionally, in middle schools, we label open enrollment honors students separately from the quote-unquote gifted students, even when our high schools have open enrollment honors courses that serve everyone and that work really effectively. And I know this is something I've talked about before. It's something I'm going to keep talking about because it really structurally affects just about every piece of a student's academic experience, and it's something that we so easily witness and visibly witness from literally third grade onward until the time we graduate. And we've witnessed diverse school communities, including Luther-Jackson, Glasgow, Sandberg, have really separated cohorts where most of the students from higher-income families are in AAP and most of the students from lower and middle-income families in standard and honors courses. There is an active investment of financial capital and human capital that goes into students who we perceive as gifted, but it comes at the expense of the masses. And so those investment gaps, some students having teachers with greater training requirements, more engaging lessons, and further intellectual stimulation, that follows kids into high school as well. For example, one thing that I actually brought up when I was running for student rep along with 120 of my peers from across the county is that during the 2019-2020 school year at West Potomac, where a lot of my friends go, they had more than a 74% AP participation rate for white students. Meanwhile, for Asian students, it was 40%. For Black students, it was 28%. And for Latino students, it was under 22%. Just think about that. Less than 22% versus 74% in the same school. And so where is there room to root out inequity? Let's take looks at a lot of different resources that we have at our disposal and a lot of different things that come with programming. Of course, there is the accessibility piece when it comes to just making sure that kids can get teacher-recommended or retested into advanced academics programs when they're younger and maybe when they're older, even exploring that open enrollment honors option. One conversation that I had at the very, very tail end of that conference, it was from like 7:00 a.m. to like 5:00 p.m., and I was actually there at that hotel through around 7:00 p.m. I was actually talking to this school board member from Plymouth in Massachusetts, and I was telling her about what we witnessed in our advanced academics programs in Fairfax County. Something she brought up is, oh, in Massachusetts, our state actually said, hey, we're not going to do gifted programs anymore, and instead, we're going to focus on providing that similar quality of instruction to all students. And so she talked about how that had been really successful for her particular community. I don't know if Virginia is quite there yet, but does anyone want to take a guess at what the number-one state for K-12 education is in this country? That's right, Massachusetts. And so we can also look at some of the potential funding that we have down the line, not necessarily in terms of the already allocated pieces of our proposed budget, but in terms of some of the unspent pieces, we can really make sure that we are looking at how to spend that effectively and really focus on underserved communities. So for example, let's take a look at some of the $10 million in legislative placeholder funds that were set aside in that proposed budget. If that were to go unspent, fingers crossed, toes crossed, everything crossed, about a quarter of that amount could pay for a Systems of Support advisor in every middle school, someone whose full-time job it is to help struggling students. That can help bring down chronic absence rates, bring up course and SOL pass rates, and ensure that the students who are most at risk are able to get the support that they so desperately need. Additionally, SOSAs already exist in every one of our high schools, but right now, it's up to middle school principals to spend their own money on that position if they so choose. And that leads to clear inequity, right? Some kids have access to SOSAs who can support them, and some don't. And as of right now, we don't have just that full-time position where someone is working to support academically struggling kids, excuse me, struggling kids, and just that's their entire job title. And also, I think a little bit later down the line, we can really take a look at revenue sources. Of course, in Virginia, the Dillon Rule really constrains how local governments are able to raise money, and so there are a lot of caps on different areas. And then the state government and the federal government in the past have not necessarily been paying as much as they should have been towards our schools. And so that really leaves things up to property taxes. But that means that when a new window opens up to really expand where school funding can come from, it's really worth taking a look at. And in November 2022, a new state law will allow our county Board of Supervisors the opportunity to levy a meals tax without a referendum. And so of course, there are some current economic challenges with that and with particularly restaurants in our county, but as we look long-term, some studies have forecasted that that could bring in as much as $100 million in new revenue. And just imagine what that could do in our school system. And so really building up those collaborative relationships and making sure that we can be the best advocates possible for all of the students in the system is a really huge deal. And I want to thank you all so much for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item 5.01 has been removed. Agenda item 5.02, School Year 2022 through 23 Calendar. I call on Ms. Tolan for the motion.
I move that the board approve the 2022-2023 school year calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cohen. Ms. Tolan, would you like to speak to your motion?
I am in favor of this calendar draft due to the many concerns I heard this year regarding the operational difficulties with so many O-days on our calendar, days when no new material could be taught and other activities were restricted. We had those days in the calendar to celebrate the observance of our diverse community. Unfortunately, even as we heard from speakers tonight, those days did not work as well as we expected, and we needed to add some of those days as holidays in this year's calendar. In addition, the number of days on our calendar that did not coincide with days that neighboring jurisdictions head off have caused and are causing significant needs for substitute teachers. At a time when we have a shortage of substitutes, this is a real issue for school management. In a district like Drainsville that borders both Arlington and Loudoun Counties, our schools are feeling this this year. The operational challenges that we are seeing due to COVID and staff shortages has exacerbated our operational challenges on many levels, and I feel that we need to adjust our calendar accordingly. I am also advocating for teachers to be able to present new material on O-days, as we discussed. Based upon my years of experience working in the FCPS central office and my work with teachers and school staff, I understand the importance of teacher professional development, and I'm happy to see those days in the calendar spaced throughout the year in a way that meets best practices in adult professional development and allows for our teachers to deliver the best product possible for our students. The community input around this calendar was more significant this year than previously, and staff weighed a number of factors: VDOE guidance, student and staff absenteeism, superintendent and board priorities, calendars of neighboring districts, family survey data, and calendar committee reports. The process and the calendar are not perfect, but as a compromise, this is a good start. I'm putting this motion forward to get our discussion going on this calendar here tonight. I know there are several follow-on motions that are important for us to consider to make this calendar process even better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Cohen?
Thank you. Last year, the board asked for a more thoughtful and inclusive process, and this calendar is a result of exactly that. We had significant engagement from our community, and thanks to a follow-on motion you will hear shortly, we will have a commitment to a path forward for even more community engagement for the 2022-23 calendar. The old calendars felt kind of like my pre-COVID jeans. They just don't fit quite who we are now. Adding days that better align us with our neighboring counties where almost 40- now. Adding days that better align us with our neighboring counties where almost 40% of our employees reside, incorporate more planning and time and teacher workdays, and better support our community, help us demonstrate the caring culture that we so often talk about. The calendar isn't perfect. I'm sure no, no, no calendar could ever be. In our house, we'd like to see the school year start later and in earlier. In fact, my kids would like me to tell you today that they think we should make every weekend a three-day weekend, so the Cohen kids will, are going to be disappointed when I get home. I remain concerned that we have some extra work to do to ensure that our hourly employees remain whole, and I'm committed to working with Dr. Brabran and my colleagues to help mitigate any negative impacts. All that said, I'm beyond proud to second this calendar, and I'm beyond grateful to our community members for reaching out, to our staff for all their hard work, and to my colleagues who work so hard to make this calendar the best one yet.
Mr. Fresh?
Thank you. As Ms. Cohen said, last year, this board voted unanimously to direct the superintendent and his team to develop and execute a more holistic and thorough calendar development process. So first, I'd like to thank staff for all of the hard work they put into this. I know it was a lot of work, and I am pleased with where we've landed, and I know Providence District families are as well. This calendar will ease operational strain by aligning FCPS closures with other local school systems and providing room for increased professional development. Additionally, and I think this is critical, this calendar can help us achieve our strategic goal of enhancing our ability to attract and retain a premier workforce. I appreciate the advocacy, especially from our students, some of whom we saw tonight and we heard this evening, and it's gratifying to see such passionate support for the caring culture we are all striving to create. I will enthusiastically support this motion and this calendar. Thank you.
Seizmar Heizer?
Thank you. And I will be brief because my two colleagues said it, especially the jeans part, better than I ever could. So I appreciate, I just wanted to say, I wanted to thank my colleagues on this board. It's been a long process and a long road, and I appreciate all the conversations that we've had along the way to try to make this calendar, which I think will never be perfect, but as, as good as I think we can all try to be, work together to make it. So I appreciate all of the hard work, the conversations, and I appreciate our staff's hard work on, on the calendar as well. And they're, I think it's important that we look at our school system as it is now and the operational challenges that we are facing with our sub shortages, with our teachers, with recruitment, with our teacher shortage, with the reality that we live in a northern Virginia community where people live all over the community, and to be in alignment with our neighbors as, as much as we can on days that allow our teachers to be able to be in the building and not worry about their children at home. And I think this is an important calendar that really strives to work towards our strategic goals of a caring culture, of a premier workforce. And I look forward to the follow-on motions. I look forward to processes to make it even better every year until we find that perfect calendar. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll also be supporting this calendar. I did spend time this past year just talking to, you know, parents and, and my own principals in my district. My district does border both Loudoun and Prince William, so many of our teachers and staff live in these neighboring districts, have children that are attending those schools. And the feedback that I often got was that it is difficult for them to be able to staff and, and, and work with our teachers and our staff if, if we have a, a huge misalignment to the rest of the region. And I think that will, this calendar, although not perfect, and I look forward to the follow-ons that I, I will support, I think is helping get us there. And I look forward to next year where we can improve even more upon this process. And with that, I am going to go ahead and call for the vote. Oh, I, oh, okey-dokey. Well, I, I apologize. It just came out of nowhere. Okay. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. One of the things I do want to say is thank you, staff, all of your work on this. The professional development days have been something that I've heard quite a bit from my principals, and thank you. We all know good PDs not drive by. It is, it has to be offered consistently and frequently for coaching. Having said that, I did have some questions that I asked previously, but I don't think I was able to get the answer. So I'm hoping someone will be able to help me just continue to build some better understanding of the calendar this evening. When we looked at the data that was posted and I, trying to get a sense of the operational impacts, I would like to get some sense of how was that data utilized? What metrics did we determine to see whether or not a date would make sense as either a, a holiday or a workday? If somebody could speak to that. Thank you.
So there was no clear criteria for a number of days for any particular absence day. But as we did look at the data, we did look for trends for both student and staff absences.
Okay. I, I guess I'm going to be a little bit more specific. One of the things that I'm looking at when I see the data is Bodhi Day. It seems to have a high impact both for staff and students, but it was not one of the considered, one of the considered days. And I'd like to get a sense as to how come.
So in reviewing the calendar data, when we looked at all of the data inputs, which included our school board priorities, superintendent priorities, staff, student, and community input through surveys and community feedback, as well as our calendar development group, along with looking at neighboring jurisdictions, while Bodhi Day does have some absences that are higher than others when you look at the day of the week, when you looked at all of the other factors combined, we did not choose to add that to the calendar.
Right. I, I guess I'm trying to figure out why, but I'm just going to jump into my, stays were chosen as holidays for all, and some were chosen as staff days. Can you give me a sense as to how those decisions came to be made? What criteria was used?
In looking at our professional workdays, we really look to provide adequate spacing throughout the year for professional development. And so working closely with our instructional services staff and our region assistant superintendents and trying to figure out the best placing for those professional workdays.
Okay. One more thing, as somebody who used to work in a different jurisdiction and had children in this division, I certainly appreciate the dilemma when we have spring breaks that are different. It is quite a significant load. Again, I lived that reality for a number of, and I hear the conversation about making sure we're matching surrounding jurisdictions in terms of what they're doing. But I also, in reviewing the other jurisdictions' calendars, noticed a number of other days where they have student holidays and will have the same issue with staff who have children in those divisions who are not in school. What would be the plan to support at that point?
So I'm not aware of the holidays that you're talking about?
Not necessarily federal holidays, but student holidays or just days that those jurisdictions have designated. When I went through the calendars, I saw about six or seven where we have of Loudoun, Prince, not Prince George, Prince William and Arlington, that they would be off and that we're not off. Those are student holidays. And so it would present the same issue that we would have on holidays.
So I guess we would say that we would, as we're doing today, as we are pulling in our central office staff to support the work in schools, of course, we rely upon our principals in our buildings. As a former elementary principal myself, I know that I had to engage and work with our staff and use them creatively a number of ways. As we looked at developing this calendar, wanting to ensure that we were aligning the majority of our days that we were recognizing with our neighboring jurisdictions. But as always, we rely upon the strength and expertise of our school-based administrators to work with those needs that might arise within their buildings for, for those days that you might be talking about. And again, also supporting with central office as we can. We also know that it, it has been quite a heavy lift on central office these past few weeks as we have been engaged in a surge. We're over 400 of our staff members have volunteered to work in schools, and we've been putting about 100 or so of those individuals into schools on a regular basis. And that has taken its toll on central office. So it's not something that we would want to engage in on a regular basis. But again, we do rely upon the expertise of our principals.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Smith. I don't want to take any more time. While you did provide some responses to my questions, I don't know if I built the clarity that I was hoping to have, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, we often forget how lucky we are in Fairfax that we have such a multifaceted community and, and stakeholder groups that are so engaged in the process of making things better year after year for our community. You know, I, I, I do want to take a moment to celebrate this win in, in what has been a tremendous effort from staff in getting us to a place where we've been able to prioritize instructional time for students in a time when it's obviously most pressing. We've been responsive to the professional development needs of our staff in providing more workdays for planning time and training to invest in, in, in their career and, and show them that kind of respect of a, of their profession. You know, it's wonderful that we've been able to be sensitive to transition times and how those affect, especially kids with disabilities, but our entire community. And of course, the operational difficulty that arose from being inconsistent with our neighboring jurisdictions and the operational instructional disruption that we've heard from our community has come about from O-days and staff and student absences over the years in disparate ways for our communities. So I, again, I want to thank staff for, for their hard work in bringing this together. You know, last year, I spoke to the idea of pluralism and, and the importance of recognizing that operationally, perhaps for staff, instructionally for students, the burdens have been carried in ways that are different depending on the background somebody came from in our community. And the importance of remembering that when we bring our full selves to every space that we can be in, that's ultimately the best way to build a community. That when we say diversity and value in care and culture, that it's not just platitudes, but hopefully a way where we can bring our full selves and, and teach our children that, you know, perhaps your neighbor recognizes this day for XYZ reason, and we love them for even, you know, for that, and, and we can find our commonality in that. So I think that these will also be incredible instructional opportunities as we build a future that hopefully is more peaceful and more understanding as a collective. I think between last year and this year, we've come up out with a few lessons. You know, first, that we don't have power unless it's together, and we cannot do it alone. And when we talk about equity, we have to fight for every one of us as if we're personally impacted ourselves. And, and you know, that we must leave for, room for understanding as we go along that path. Coming together is worth it, and if we don't get it right the first time, it doesn't mean that we give up. So today, I think is, is a clear example of not allowing perfect to be the enemy of the good. Tonight is a win, and, and hopefully shows our community once again, FCPS cares, FCPS responds, and FCPS is constantly evolving towards the better. At the work session, staff articulated that the calendar this year is an art and not a science, that it's a constant work in progress. And I want to remind myself first and, and all of us that relying on data doesn't always mean that you have straightforward numbers that give you an answer. We make judgments about when we use quantitative and qualitative tools. We make judgments and understandings about the limitations of data, and when we have to make decisions with our best judgment, knowing what's available and also what's not. So from an equity standpoint, we can do even better in the future and certainly must engage in even more robust outreach to those communities that are least likely to be heard. And this year, hopefully, operationally and instructionally, we'll be able to match with our local jurisdictions, with other local jurisdictions to make things as smooth as possible for our constituents. I had not wanted to bring a follow-on to signal to the community tonight that this is indeed a win, and so I didn't. But I do want to clarify two points that staff know I'm asking about tonight because of the community, some of the community questions around it, where I know staff have already committed and will be doing this work. The first is regarding lunar holidays. So we know that some of our community members, you know, the calendar may adjust for certain days that may pose instructional and operational disruption for our system, and that that may only happen further in advance based on that lunar calendar. So Mr. Smith or Dr. Brabran, would you kindly clarify what would occur if we find out next year that such a day falls on a weekday rather than a weekend? And we have listed a commitment, of course, because of that disruption, to, to take those days off, but they are not listed as days off right now.
Yes, Ms. Omech, we have looked at this issue even this year about some changes to the O-days based on the lunar calendar. If that were to happen, we'd certainly work to communicate that to our community well in advance of any changes. We hope there won't be any, but if there are, we would make the appropriate notifications. Thanks.
Thank you so much. And I'm grateful to staff for that commitment. I just want to make sure it's loud and clear to the community. Most likely, you know, either Lunar New Year or AIDS, really, that would be impacted in that sense, but that those days would hopefully be off in the future. And the second piece, I know some of our bus drivers have been concerned just regarding the fact that, you know, if you look at all the numbers added up, you know, with the three professional development days after the week change, that perhaps there are two days in question about pay and, and whether that's reflected in contract. But of course, I want to remind everyone that we did have a work session just in the past few weeks about establishing a working group that will review contracts and that the bus driver, I want our bus drivers to hear loud and clear that this is not a dismissal of that concern, but perhaps a, an identification of where it might be most relevant. So rather than the calendar piece specifically being where we address that, that that is a budget conversation, that I, I personally, and I know some of my colleagues here on the board, are committed to making sure that reflects itself in the budget so that we don't cut anyone short. And I do want to give Mr. Smith just the opportunity to explain a little bit of that because I want to make sure timeline-wise, we're going to be able to have that working group conversation in advance of the final budget vote to make sure that whatever financially will need to be adjusted is reflected in that budget and our bus drivers do not fall short regardless of those two days. Mr. Smith, would you kindly speak to that?
So yes, in our work session, I believe it was last week, things seemed to be running together these days. We did share that we would pull together a working group of, of individuals who would be impacted by the most recent study that our Human Resources Office did regarding bus drivers, family liaisons, and bus attendants. And we were talking about looking at some options for our drivers who were at the upper end of the scale, but also possi, the possibility of looking at overall compensation and, and what that might look like for bus drivers. And we had shared at that meeting that we provided that study so that it could be considered as part of this, this current budget cycle, and we'll be bringing some recommendations back to the board. And so we are committed to doing that work and bringing that work back to the board.
Thank you so much. And just for a clarification, it may not reflect itself in the advertised budget publicly, but will certainly in the final budget before the vote. Is that correct?
Certainly. As I shared earlier in the response, as we are getting through the surge, we have many staff members who are also working in schools. And so once we can get through the surge, we will be pulling that work group together so that we can begin that work.
Thank you so much. Just want to make sure that's very clear to our community so folks don't get disappointed looking ahead. And I certainly look forward to working with you, Mr. Smith and Dr. Brabran, on ensuring that's reflected and having to bring an amendment if that proves necessary later on. Thank you so much. And again, let's celebrate this win because it's a lot of hard work and we're at a good place.
Thank you, Ms. Omech. Ms. Glockland?
No problem. So anyone who watched the school board's singular work session on the calendar knows that myself, along with Dr. Anderson in particular, several other colleagues as well, but we express concern about the calendar we have in front of us. I want to first begin by making clear that I believe all 12 of us on this board care about our community. It is about a caring culture, and it is also about making complex decisions when we have many competing needs in this county. Secondly, as we told this community just 10 months ago when we voted in March of 2021 on the existing calendar, that we have a legal standard. We have a constitutional obligation to make sure we have a secular calendar. And so the questions that I raised and others during the work session and that I'm going to emphasize here tonight are this. It is not about wanting to have religion in our calendars because we care more or because we think we'll attract employees more or because we think it's having an impact, and we have no other choice. I'm grateful to staff that through pressure from board members, they did create I'm grateful to staff that through pressure from board members, they did create a five-page data document that shows over the past six years what have been the absentee rates for our students and our absentee rates for our employees. And for anyone who wants to look at it, if you look at the top eight religious holidays for the data, along with the federal holiday of Veterans Day, you will see that there is quite a close alignment between staff absences among all nine of those days as well as student absences. The student absences range anywhere from 4.3% on Rosh Hashanah to about 6.2% for Ramadan. The others fall somewhere between 4% and 5%. One outlier where we have two years of data is Eid of Fidur. For our staff employees, the averages over the five to six years is as low as 8%, two of which are the holidays that we're now putting into the calendar and ranging to anywhere from 9% to 11% on Lunar New Year and Ramadan. Veterans Day also came out at the top with 11%. In the 10 years I've been on the board, we have never had Veterans Day off. We were told because it created a disruption in learning when we had the end of the quarter, Election Day, teacher workdays, and then Thanksgiving. And yet miraculously, this year, suddenly we're injecting these religious holidays into the calendar. They do not represent, as the data will show, that we have an operational impact. While the other neighboring jurisdictions did have three of these holidays off in their calendars, data shows from Fairfax County that they were some of the lowest that we had for our staff absences as well as our students. We do have a legal obligation to make these decisions on a secular calendar. And this is what concerns me and this is what I had asked for a two-week extension because I think we needed to have more conversation. Finally, I just want to make sure that the public understands, the superintendent presented this calendar to the board members while we were on our winter break. I was on vacation with my husband and family. When I came back from the winter break, I had a two-by-two meeting on January 6th. The board then had its work session. It was presented publicly to the community just two weeks ago. I do not think that this is how we should be passing a school calendar when I do not think it reflects the data. It does not reflect what we heard in our surveys from our families. My principals told me their big challenge was a spring break differentiation, not one days off. As Dr. Anderson noted, every single one of these jurisdictions for which we're pointing to the religious holiday that we're going to now implant into our calendar, they have many other professional and teacher workdays that don't align with ours and ours don't align with them. So I guess where I want to help my colleagues and the community understand is I don't see this as a thing to celebrate, as one of my colleagues said. Our working families are going to basically find that 15 out of 36 weeks are disrupted learning, our children are experiencing 15 out of 36 weeks of disrupted learning. That's 42% of the learning year. The calendar is now going to extend an extra five days. There are ways that we could have honored the challenges we face with the other school systems by simply converting more of our professional workdays where we perceived that there was higher absentee rates than normal. But I would just ask the community to look at the data charts. Operational impact for the last six years, we've never had to stop operating one single day, not even this year, and nothing's demonstrated that would change for this coming year. So I wish I could be joining everyone in voting for this calendar because I know many are feeling excited about it, but for those who are disappointed and concerned, including our working families and our support employees, I just hope we can do a better job and I hope that the follow-on motions will help get us there.
Thank you. And I do want to remind my colleagues, everyone has the opportunity to make amendments to this motion. Ms. Maron.
So my first priority for the school calendar is that it prioritizes student instruction. And I believe that this calendar does. The additional time for professional development and staff to prepare for instruction is huge, especially for our elementary school educators. So I thank staff on the mental gymnastics to make this happen. So when I was in graduate school for public policy, that's when I first heard that term, that policymaking is both an art and a science. And that was 20 years ago and it still rings true to me today because there are quantitative data and qualitative data to be considered. And I think this process reflects the many areas and opportunities of consideration. So for one, we looked at attendance data. That was considered and analyzed to provide substantiating evidence around certain dates. You know, ironically, I'm actually reading a book that the Central Office staff, some of them are reading, it's called Street Data, and it's about how to shift our assessment of students away from using big data, from standardized tests to more holistic data that looks to pull from people's lived experiences and have that value and contextualization added into the process of learning and assessment. So I think it's very poignant that I'm reading that book and thinking about how it's not just that quantitative data of attendance that is very quantifiable, very clear, but it's the other types of qualitative data. One of those qualitative data is the operational strain, which we've heard of, not having alignment to the surrounding jurisdictions. The superintendent said tonight, a third of our staff live in outside places outside of Fairfax. Even today, someone texted me and said, hey, you off Monday and Tuesday? I live in Loudoun. Can we get together? I said, no, we have a different calendar. So it is an operational strain for working parents, for parents in any positions, if they, you know, have business and lives that connect over county lines. The second piece of qualitative data is trying to get to that goal, that strategic goal of a premier workforce. You know, we already have a challenge in our revenue stream and that we fund so much locally that it's hard for us to compete with surrounding jurisdictions who can have more flexibility and revenue to pay more. So now add on top of that, that our work, that our calendar doesn't align with those jurisdictions. You know, they have many options. I think that that is a qualitative piece of data that needs to be considered. And finally, you know, this process captures the essence of our caring culture strategic goal. When the morale of marginalized students and staff are effective, as I've heard from many 100 mil constituents, including the first speaker tonight, who was a senior at Marshall High School, that impacts instruction and it impacts our ability to be a premier workforce. So, you know, in summary, the superintendents and staff have spent ample time in culling public information, getting input, the surveys, having meetings with the board members. I believe my role on the board is to help approve this calendar and to be, to inform the process during our work sessions. And I want to help the board stay in the lane of policy and not in operations. So I'm very pleased to see that my follow-on motion from the 2021 calendar vote directed the superintendent to have a holistic process in developing the calendar this year and for the future. So I believe this has been achieved and I will celebrate this calendar with my colleagues and community members who have championed this work. Thank you.
Ms. Dernak-Kofax.
As some have said, this calendar is far from perfect. I do not believe the process that we used to get here was our best work at all, but I plan to support this calendar because our community has asked and needs many of the changes outlined. As a society, we are dealing with complicated, divisive, and emotional issues every single day. Faith brings many people peace. Time off can make a depleted individual feel whole. And being able to provide opportunities that will bring peace and to make individuals feel seen and heard is always a win. So those are my reasons for supporting this calendar. I will also support and speak to several of the follow-on motions that I think are necessary to improve the calendar process next year and years beyond because these changes that we're instituting are big and impactful and change our school year. So I look forward to hearing from community members and I look forward to continued community communication and, but I do thank everyone. We struggled with this, as we always do, to bring what's best and to ensure that we are bringing forth our very best work. Policymaking is never easy and I thank everyone who played a part of this, including our staff, even if many times I was not in agreement with the process, but thank you all and I look forward to supporting this, as I said, because I think it's the right thing and our community has asked for this at this time.
Ms. Corbett-Sanders.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I think we all hear the tiredness and the relief, both in the words and in the sentiments expressed tonight. As a school system, we continue to improve our processes and often as we try to improve our processes, it causes angst, challenges, and frustrations for those involved in the process. This calendar process has been no different and we know that the school calendar is very important to our students, our families, and our staff because it impacts so much of their lives. The calendar and the process this year and in previous years has never been perfect. However, we do need to adopt a calendar tonight to ensure that our families are able to plan their lives while, address, plan their lives while addressing the concerns of many in our community regarding holidays, professional development, and most importantly, student outcomes associated with the increased opportunities for professional development. I will be making a number of follow-on motions tonight to continuously improve our process and takes into account the increasing needs of our school system to attract and retain the best and the brightest in the midst of a national teacher shortage and ensure that we continue to have a focus on what's most important, which is student outcomes. So I will support this, but I will also support the follow-on motions that both myself and many of my colleagues have put forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, I see your light on again.
Yes, I know sometimes that our community doesn't catch all of our work sessions, sometimes they don't catch all of our communications. So I did want to make sure it was clear that as part of FCPS's caring culture, which we really emphasized last year's calendar, I am very proud to be part of a system that ensured our employees, whatever their faith, would have up to two paid days to take and honor their faith because we do live in such a diverse community with diverse faith. And that we, again, in needing to run a secular calendar, we also wanted to provide that caring atmosphere. That, to me, is how you help, when you look at the data where 3% to 5% of our communities might have a different faith, the other 95% can continue with continuous learning that we know, again, our students benefit from the most, as do our families. So I don't want to be up here debating one another. I really actually appreciate the tone. I think that we've set tonight and I hope that we're modeling for our community that as all 12 of us care deeply about the same thing and we might come at it with different solutions, and I would even say that about the superintendent and his team. I hope what we can show to the community is the continued mutual respect that we want to give to one another, but most importantly, I know from the letters that I've personally received as well as others, please do not have a takeaway that some board members cared about religious equity and some did not. That is not and cannot be our legal and constitutional actions here tonight, but how we create a calendar that we feel helps the system operate, this is what the vote is about tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the added time.
Thank you. Mr. Frisch. Sorry, with the makers of the motion, would you like to go ahead, Ms. Tolan?
Just to kind of close out, I just want to thank all of my colleagues for putting a lot of time and effort and analysis into the calendar and a huge thank you to staff that has worked very hard on this as well. As many of us have said, the calendar we're about to vote on is not perfect, but it hits many of the priorities that we've been talking about here. You know, I know something, we even talked about learning continuity, just balancing, you know, odd days and even days. I know I asked staff about that at the work session and that they had looked very carefully at that as even another area of consideration. The professional development for staff, all of the operational issues that we've talked about. From the families that I have heard from, they're very anxious for this calendar to be adopted in many cases. I also want to thank Ms. Omech for bringing up the issue of our support employees and the concerns that our support employees had with the calendar. You know, this is a budget issue that we will be bringing up as we have our further discussions on our budget process. So with that, I will turn it over to our board chair to proceed with our vote.
Thank you. We had one more. Ms. Cohen wanted to.
Just very briefly, from that student perspective, I do want to note, teachers still teaching content on the current religious observance day system is a very real thing and a lot of students deal with the repercussions of it. And we can't have one set of rules for the kids who are not practicing a religious holiday and another set of rules for the kids who are and who might not be at school because, right, I think this goes back to the idea that some things are well-intentioned in theory, but then in practice, they don't always play out. And so I think really just being able to ensure that there is consistency for everyone is a huge, huge win for the student body and also making sure that we align with neighboring divisions where so many of our teachers come from, not just for time off for teachers who practice individual religions, but also for childcare needs is incredibly important for our students.
Thank you. Mr. Chadry. Ms. Cohen.
I just wanted to add one last thing that I should have had in my comments. I really want to thank Julie Shepherd, who the Navy stole her away from us, but I hope she'll be back again, like so many of our amazing military families, just for her advocacy over the years, I think, to all of us about bringing the voice of military spouses and military families about getting to have that day together on Veterans Day. And as Ms. McLaughlin referenced, I know it's something that this board certainly has wrestled with over the years to try to get this right and make sure that our military families felt supported and I hope that they're feeling this tonight. Thank you.
And with that, can we have the motion up on the screen? All right. All those in favor of approving the 2022-23 calendar, please raise your hands. Ms. Maron, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Dernak-Kofax, Ms. Seizmore Heizer, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Omech, Ms. Karen Corbett-Sanders, and myself, and Ms. Kizgimara. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Dr. Anderson and Ms. McLaughlin. That motion passes. The 2022-23 calendar is approved. And I just want to take a very quick second to just say thank you to our staff for your work and to all of our community members who have had very passionate involvement and, you know, talking with all of us to try to get to that more perfect, more inclusive calendar that can work for all students and all staff. Thank you. And with that, Ms. Corbett-Sanders.
Just a point of clarification, and I don't know if we have to re-vote. It should say to approve the 2022-2023 school year calendar.
I thought we were voting on the calendar. We didn't have a vote.
Well, no, but it's not the full employee calendar.
Yes, yes, yes.
And so if we could just, I think we can just, with unanimous consent.
That's important. I think without objection that we can make a little, yes, thank you. Thank you for that, Ms. Corbett-Sanders. It is a school year calendar. All right, and I'll call on you for a follow-on.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I move to direct the superintendent to develop two or more options for the 2023-2024 school year calendar that continues to emphasize instructional time and is compliant with the state code requirements to not begin school more than 14 days prior to Labor Day, allows for a limited number of inclement weather days, and is compliant with the
allows for a limited number of inclement weather days, and is compliant with the state code of 180 days or a minimum of 990 hours.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. When I look at the competing demands before us, including professional development, modifications to the calendar to reflect neighboring districts, and the potential of changing our middle school start times, the state code allows flexibility in developing our calendars while leaving the final adoption of the calendar to the local school board. The follow-on motion requests the superintendent to look at the flexibility allowed in the code and provide options to the community, or to the board, I mean. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate being able to partner with Ms. Corbett Sanders on this, and I do hope our colleagues will join us in this process. As I shared in my prior remarks, I have concerns on where we landed, but I did want to emphasize for the public and for my colleagues that it was really interesting to see how Prince William in Loudoun and Arlington actually published and sent out as part of their survey and community input, the draft calendars themselves. So while it was amazing to have 75,000 FCPS employees and family members and students respond to the survey, which is really incredible numbers for us, we didn't, that was just asking questions. Then, as we talked about the complexity of putting all of that input together and creating a calendar, I think the board and the community would have been better served if we had that. I appreciate in my conversations with Dr. Braybrand that he's been supportive of it, but I know with his retirement, we'll be working with the next superintendent. So I really felt that tonight was important, that we, as a board, as we sit here together, and who knows when we're going to have time to come back together and start talking about this before staff works on it, I think it is important that we provide this clarity and direction of expectations. And I do hope that, again, if colleagues have any questions about it, you'll ask before making a decision, but I do think this would be beneficial to our work.
Ms. Cohen? No. Yeah. Okay. Ms. Omech?
Yeah, I guess I had a clarifying question, and I suppose, you know, many of us don't have the advantage of having reviewed these over time or discussed them in the work sessions. I know they all came in just yesterday, but I mentioned, you know, what I'm concerned about here is I thought compared to last time and this time, it was a much more unifying process to have one option and work together on making it the best option it could be. And this perhaps is committing us to developing at least two. I don't know that that's necessarily the best path forward. I don't know what the next superintendent will want to do. I'm concerned that this will lead us into a mucky situation of divisive community reality, and I appreciate the intention with this, but perhaps since it's more repetitive of what our expectations are of the calendar with that potential detriment, I'm a little bit nervous to support it, and just want to say that I appreciate the intention, but I'm concerned that that could happen.
Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. McLaughlin, I can speak to one of the surrounding jurisdictions, but perhaps in your research for this motion, you can give some additional information. Of our neighbors, how do they typically present a calendar? Has it been one, several? I know here, last year, granted, we had four different versions last year, but in years previous, there've been more than one, and I know from my work in Loudoun County, it's always been more than one, but I'm not sure what you were able to find with the other jurisdictions. Can you give a little bit more information if you have it?
Yeah, I can speak to that in terms of the information I found going to their minutes and board docs, that they did present two options, and in fact, when they presented to the board, they said, you know, this was the support we got for option one versus two, and interesting, in Loudoun County, the option they chose, there was 72% community support for the calendar they picked. So, Ms. Omech, I appreciate your concern, but as someone who's been an FCPS parent for 18 years, the norm, and Ms. Corbett Sanders dates even a little bit further than me, the norm was that we have sent and provided to the board and the public multiple calendar options, and given that's the history in this county, and given that the other surrounding jurisdictions accomplish it every single year without strife, I have confidence in Fairfax County Board and the Fairfax County community that we can certainly return to that norm and handle it.
Thank you. Did you also want to add something to?
I just wanted to add two things. One, clarifying that this motion was actually shared on Tuesday night. I had sent a note to everybody at the board saying that I would be bringing this forward. But the reason I brought it forward was really about the importance of looking beyond just one calendar year and looking at all of the different competing demands that this school system has on it, which is not only the most important, which is to ensure that we have a world-class education where every child succeeds, but to do that, you need to have professional development built in. We also know that there is a continued push for us to look at the ability to change our middle school start times, and we know that there is, there are concerns in the community about, you know, start date, end dates. So what this does is it says, you know, we've always, while I've been in Fairfax County, and granted, I graduated 40-something years ago from Fairfax County Public Schools, and I, my last daughter graduated a few years ago, four years ago, what we find is that we tend to always rely on the, we've always done it this way. And what this does is it says, let's be innovative, let's look at the flexibility that we have and see how we can best meet the needs of the school system and the community, and having our staff really take a look and come back with, these are different options. They may come back and say, here's your 990 plus all these extra hours built into the calendar, it's less than the 180 days, which, by the way, some of the school systems in the state of Virginia don't go a full 180 days, but we are a little concerned about this approach, or wow, we hadn't thought about it, and it actually works for us. What this does is call for innovation and continuous process improvement by having options.
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation from both of you, and I'm happy to support this follow-on. I do appreciate Ms. Omech's concern about having division when we're having this discussion, and I think much of that is stemmed from not having a clear framework. I was glad that Ms. McLaughlin was able to really articulate what our purpose is as a school board when it comes to setting calendars. It has to be a secular reason. I think beginning from that framework will really help all of us to be on a path that is not divisive, but just maybe offers some choices and opportunities. You know, reading through some communication that I'm sure all of you had, we've had other people who are concerned and writing to us that the calendar that we proposed and just voted on just a little while ago starts later, starts earlier and ends later than Loudoun County. So we have all of those days where if you have, the same issue that we're trying to address continues to exist. So I am happy to support, but I definitely understand Ms. Omech's concern.
Okay. Are there other school board members? Ms. Omech?
Yeah, perhaps a clarification on the value add here, because I don't disagree with certain merits, right? I think we can all agree that 990 hours is a better model potentially. We discussed that in the work session, that starting, you know, the 14 days, et cetera, is a good way to move forward, but it seems we're just restricting ourselves here. When we start the calendar conversation next year, these are all considerations that can continue. The only thing I see this doing is giving us, constraining us to more than one option. So rather than saying one or more options, we're saying two or more options, which means we have to have at least two options, whereas the rest we all agree on, and is up for discussion next year, just like it is every year. So I don't see the significant value add that is happening here, other than to restrict the next leader from having one or more options, as opposed to two or more options. And again, I, we've been through an extremely painful two years trying to do this. This was a much more unifying process than was before. I think we should give our next superintendent the room here to decide how they want to do it, with the understanding that these are all priorities, we're all going to bring forward next year too, and are already out there and are part of the development process anyway. So I just urge my colleagues to consider that. I don't know why we're binding ourselves with something a year in advance when we don't have to.
Thank you, Ms. Omech. Is there anyone else? Okay, I just want to, so I want to, just to clarify something, we did pass a calendar with secular purpose, number one. Number two, we did have a process this year. It was different than prior years. It took a different approach. It went out to the community, it said, what are your priorities? What are your desires? What do you think we should consider? It was brought back, and all of those pieces were considered in the formulation of the calendar. So, you know, it is a different process. I don't know, I think it can be improved. Personally, I liked it, you know, considering we all know that there are many, many different pieces to how we put a calendar together. You know, I'm fine with this, and please clarify, Ms. Corbett Sanders, if you will, for me, this is, you're really looking to have some comparisons between the 990, this has nothing to do with surveying our parents or anything else. You would just like to compare and have some options where we can take some of these things into account. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I thought I said it.
I thought you did too, but I wanted to clarify, because I heard some different things, and more options, and being able to talk through the pros and cons. Personally, I support that, and I'll be supporting this. And with that, I think we can go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor of this follow-on? Dr. Anderson, Ms. Tolan, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Darnat Kofax, Ms. Seismore Heizer, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and Ms. Kez Gamarra. All those opposed? Ms. Omech, Ms. Maron, that follow-on passes. Let me just.
Chairman Bukarski, may I be recognized for a moment?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to make sure, given we had another instance where the board passed something and there was a lack of clarity by staff understanding what it was, so I don't want to leave tonight, but Ms. Corbett Sanders, with your affirmation, I want to make sure staff understands, that motion at the very end, the last sentence, Dr. Braybrand and Mr. Smith, says is compliant with state code of 180 days or a minimum of 990 hours. That isn't an or, like, you're going to create a calendar that's 990 or 180. We're just citing that by state code, any draft calendar has to be at least 180 days or the 990 as a minimum. So you could bring us two calendars that were each 180 days or anything in between that and 990. Is that correctly understood?
So, go ahead, Dr. Braybrand.
Yes, we understand.
I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want to have us find out that staff thought we were saying that the two calendars would be either this or that. We're just citing state code, which makes that clear to school divisions.
Understood. It doesn't limit us, it doesn't direct us, that's fine.
Right. It's just the parameters of the state code. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to have to work on our clarity.
And Ms. Bukarski, you also have direction for the board from our parliamentarian. Could you just make sure everybody knows that for tonight about the two turns?
Yeah, that is, Mr. Morgan, would you please like to speak as to how many times members can speak to individual motions as per Roberts rules? Remind everyone, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, per Roberts rules, for any question that is pending, each member is entitled to speak twice. If a member wants to speak more than that, the member would need unanimous consent or two-thirds suspension of the rules to speak a third time.
Thank you. And can you please clarify, that is not a change? Is that always our rule?
That's standard. That's right in here.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Chairman Bukarski, I just want to make sure, the way the terms he used, you're talking about you may speak twice to a motion on the table, correct? Because you said question, and I want to make sure that's not, they're not the same thing. So you're saying two times per motion that's on the table before the board?
Yes, two times for a motion that is before the board.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for another motion.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I move to direct the superintendent to clarify with staff that June 20th, currently the last day for staff, is a flexible workplace day for professional development and allow for staff to work remotely.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Seismore Heizer. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, Madam Chair. I bring this motion to the board really as a housekeeping measure that has been done in the past. We know how hard our staff works throughout the year, and the closing out of the school year is especially busy, and this year has been stressful for all. By providing flexibility on the last day of the year, it allows our teachers the ability to decide how best to utilize their time.
Okay, Ms. Seismore Heizer?
Yeah, just briefly, I just want to thank Ms. Corbett Sanders for bringing forth this motion, and I just think it's really important to both allow our staff the flexibility, especially in this era of staffing shortages and teacher burnout, to be the professionals that they are, and, you know, choose for themselves how they can best spend that last teacher workday. So I appreciate very much you bringing this forward, and I'm happy to second this motion.
Ms. Maron?
My understanding is that this already exists. Superintendent Braybrand or Mr. Smith, can you speak to that? That that flexibility is already in place?
So that flexibility is currently part of this year's calendar and has been in the past.
So therefore, I think that this is duplicative, and I also think it crosses the line of policymaking into operational keeping. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Maron? Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you. I'm very happy to support this, having just been in the 45-10 Employee Associations meeting yesterday afternoon with Chair Bukarski, the employee association presidents, including our principals associations and employee associations, Dr. Braybrand, Dr. Ivy, Mr. Smith, and others. While I appreciate the concerns raised by one of my colleagues about where our role and place are, we'll be talking about a few other follow-on motions as well, there was conversation, Ms. Bukarski, if you can, you know, tell me if I'm capturing this incorrectly, but the principals and Dr. Braybrand are all very mindful that we have 200 principals, and they do their very best every single day, but sometimes their understanding and the clarity and the fidelity of execution, we hear from our employees, our employee associations, that that doesn't always happen. So I have been hearing from employees at times, whether it's a misunderstanding or otherwise, do they have the flexibility to telework? Are they able to do that teacher workday from home remotely? And so I actually think that this is valuable for just this calendar. Again, it ensures that the board has given this affirmative direction, and the superintendent now understands that and can communicate it out. In years past, sometimes when the board has conversations in work sessions or in business meetings, our superintendents have been lovely in saying that they support and agree to it, but then when it's not in writing, it has been called into question, and well, where was that? And that wasn't official, or no, we don't recall that. So I know it can seem simple, but I certainly think that when we talk about caring culture, employee morale, and this board being so concerned about how our teachers feel, this is a really nice, quick message. I really don't need to spend this much time talking about it, but the pushback concerned me.
Okay. Are there any other school board members wishing to speak? Seeing none, go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor of that follow-on, please raise your hands. Dr. Anderson, Ms. Tolan, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Seismore Heizer, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Omech, Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders, Ms. Kez Gamarra, and myself. That motion is unanimous with, I'm so sorry. All those opposed? Ms. Maron? That motion passes with Ms. Darnat Kofax away from the table. I now call on Ms. Corbett Sanders again for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and for being so patient with these follow-on motions. I move to direct the superintendent to bring a plan for how the O- I move to direct the superintendent to bring a plan for how the O-days and half-O-days will be used more effectively.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, very good. Okay, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Keeping me together. So I bring this motion to the table because of the confusion that the O-days caused this year with our community and our staff. We've heard from students, including those speaking this evening, our parents and our staff, about the impact of this lack of clarity in the development of master schedules for schools, for our PTOs, for our PTAs, for our boosters, and for our teachers and what they're doing in our classrooms. It's very, it's a very simple request, to ask for greater transparency, accountability, and communications about this approach that people seem to ask lots of questions about.
Ms. Tolan?
Um, I would just say, you know, as Ms. Corbett Sanders and I were talking about this, as she kind of alluded to, we're not looking for, when we say "plan," like pages and pages of information, but just somewhere where people can refer. I know we've got the regulation and, you know, things from this year, but, you know, as we talked with the last motion, we're, it's a large school district, and we just want to make sure it's very clear, uh, what these days are, you know, what can happen and what can't happen for our, you know, school administrators, our PTSD, PTA people, et cetera. So it's a simple request.
Thank you. I didn't plan on speaking about any of the follow-ons, but I don't think that the language of the motion is as described by the sponsors. This says a plan to make them more effective. It doesn't say anything about communication or making sure that people are more understanding of what the rules are. It says to make the O-days more effective. Can, are we allowed to have one of you clarify it?
Thank you. I'm, I'm happy to, Mr. Frisch. There is a lack of clarity, and because there's a lack of clarity, it's kind of a hodgepodge approach, so they're not effective. And because people don't know what to expect, some stay home because they don't know what to expect. Others come. We hear that in some classrooms, students have been, they've been made into study halls. We hear in others that they are being used for, you know, unfortunately, watching movies. And so what we want is some clarity sent to the whole, to the community, to the teachers, to the building administrators of this is the expectation of what these, what will happen on these O-days. It's really depr, to be more consistent.
I get that. I get that's what's being said. If, if I was rewriting, and I'm not going to make a motion, I'm just going to state this, I would have written it, to, to get to that point, I would have written, "I move to direct the superintendent to bring a, to more effectively communicate to students, staff, and families how O-days work." Not, this, to me, says something entirely different than anything about communication. Communication could be a part of it, but so could a heck of a lot of other things. This tells me that the O-days are not effective as currently designed and that they need to be more effective. It doesn't tell me anything about communication. Thanks.
Ms. Omech?
Yeah, thank you. I, I similarly wanted to seek a little bit more clarification. Mr. Smith, can you just speak to what we have done since we've decided on the O-days? I don't know if we've developed guidance or if there's any language that's been disseminated, et cetera, to clarify?
So yes, we pulled a committee together last year to actually develop the current regulation that we have. We developed guidance for principals. The, the work group was actually one of the most, I, I think, successful work groups that we've pulled together in Fairfax County. It was representative of individuals from our instructional, from parents, staff, of our operational teams. And we developed guidance for schools and pushed that guidance out to, to our, our schools with clear guidelines around the work. It's understandable, as we do anything in its first year, that it certainly does take time for that to become part of the culture, and there are always opportunities for us to improve upon that work. And so if this motion does pass, I see us pulling that group back together to see how we can help improve upon the practices that they put in place initially.
And, and sorry, was that codified in regulation, or where is, where does that live?
It, it, the guidance is part of the regulation.
Okay. I, I guess I'm wondering what additional, other than, I mean, Mr. Frisch's point was helpful, and other than communication, you know, with everything, when we have policy implementation is always a challenge in a division this size, and I suppose especially having been the first year of doing it. I appreciated Ms. Corbett Sanders offering some of her rationale to Mr. Frisch's question. Ms. Tolan, maybe if you want to elaborate a little bit? I'm trying to get to a yes, but I, I'm nervous about how this could potentially backtrack us over time and reopen something that's already kind of been, you know, decided.
Well, I think we've had discussions this year about the O-days not working effectively in the past, or this past year. And, you know, one of the things we've talked about is allowing new material to be presented on O-days, of course, with, you know, teachers understanding that, you know, if a student is out on that particular O-day, that, that, you know, the materials will be posted on Schoolology and very easily made up, that, that new material will be very easily taken care of. So that's a change. Okay? So I think that is just one example of, you know, we just want to make sure that everyone understands what can and cannot happen on those days.
Yeah, because I think, does the guidance document already specify that, Mr. Smith, in terms of instruction? I thought it did, actually, and I, and I know it was effectively implemented in some of our schools, at least at Woodson, where my brother goes, but if you could kindly clarify?
The guidance documents provided the types of activities that could be done based on the current regulation. We have, we are in the process of updating the regulation. We didn't want to be presumptive based on the board's decision, and so as we update the regulation, it will be updated to state that no new materials, I'm sorry, that new materials can be shared on those days, but teachers will be expected to have information posted to the learning management system, and we will build that into the regulation. Currently, we do have information built in around the kinds of activities that can happen and that are prohibitive, and we would just update that information.
Okay, so you're saying that, I guess the new development here would be that updated language explicitly saying no new content would be covered?
It would state that new content could be covered, but that, that teachers...
Oh, would make that available?
Would have to ensure that it was available on our learning management system for those students.
Okay, but that would be reviewed by this group, right? Because I, I don't know, I mean, I don't want us to just kind of make a decision out here tonight, you know, after some, this idea that this is better or not, without further consideration for how that impacts students or instruction.
So again, I, I would say that we have an established work group who helped us develop the original guidelines and can certainly go back to this established work group to help provide some clarity around the board's intent for O-days moving forward.
Okay, so perhaps, other than revisiting in a discussion for that group to update the, the regulation to more adequately meet the needs of our families, Dr. Braybrand, are you hearing anything else? Because I just, I want us to be extremely clear on what this is today, you know, what the vision for this is, if we're voting on it? And if it's anything more than that, I don't want to vote on it without knowing that. So, Dr. Braybrand, can you?
Well, I mean, in, in the end, this is, this is a motion before the board. I'll be clear, what I take from it is, is sort of where Mr. Frisch was. We need to clearly communicate our O-day practices and protocols clearly to every school, so students and families, parents, teachers understand it, and in communicating it more clearly, we'll have a more effective O-day observance. That's how I'm taking it. If it's asking us to change our regulation beyond what we've already expressed to you, I would need more clarity. We, we've already made a change, as we said, next year for the calendar in terms of how we'll do O-days, and we will communicate that to our community and our stakeholders. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Morgan, stop me if I'm doing something wrong, okay? But can I, without objection, make, revise the, the language of this? Right.
Madam Chair, do you want me to respond?
Can I? Yeah.
Please.
You can, if you just want to make an amendment through unanimous consent, you would ask to, for unanimous consent. Say, may I have unanimous consent to strike X, insert Y, et cetera?
Okay, so, without objection, so with unanimous consent, I'd like to move that we amend this, to say, to, to, I move to direct the superintendent to bring a plan for how O-days and half-Os will be implemented more effectively through communication.
Are there any objections? There is an objection. So I assume, Mr. Morgan, that fails, and...
She can change it to a motion to amend...
To amend, right.
Rather than doing it to unanimous consent.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, folks. I'm going to bring this as a motion in that case, and perhaps Mr. Frisch would second? Or I, I'll say, I move, yeah, so, I move to direct the superintendent to bring a plan for how O-days and half-Os will be implemented more effectively through communication.
Is there a second to that motion to amend? Seconded by Mr. Frisch. We are now speaking to the amended motion on the screen. Ms. Omech, do you want to make any more comments around that?
I, I think I just want to think we're on the same page. Based on what Ms. Tolan, Ms. Corbett Sanders said, I think this captures the intent, based on staff said they've heard, and I want us to be very explicit, because I think there are a lot of concerns here around backtracking on the progress we've made.
Mr. Frisch?
So this language is pretty darn close to what I heard from the sponsors, and I'd be comfortable supporting it. If it would, I'd be comfortable supporting the motion if the amendment passes.
Okay. Ms. Corbett Sanders, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, with all due respect, communication is one aspect of it, but I would like to ask the community and these, everybody at this board, do we think that the O-days were effective this year? No. Every, we heard from people in the community, we've heard from teachers, we've heard from students. They didn't work effectively. So communicating one small change to them by saying, you know, we've narrowed down the number of them and we're going to allow new, new schoolwork on those days, doesn't actually flesh out the plan enough to say, how are we going to actually honor the spirit of the O-days while ensuring that we get continued ed, you know, continued enrichment for all of our students so that they can continue to progress, while ensuring that students that are home because of a observance of their own, that they will also have the ability to participate and to catch up? And when we had a very small conversation about this at the board table where there were, during the work session, where the focus was on other aspects, we really haven't addressed the issue of how do we make these days most effective? And so it is a communications piece, but it's also fleshing it out a bit more. And for us to sit here and say, all we're going to do is communicate about a process that has not worked well, I can't support that. That's why there's more than just communications. A plan includes communications plus fleshing it out.
I had lights that were open to speak to the first motion, so if you're not looking to speak to this amendment, please turn off your little lights so we stay, we stay in line. Okay, Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. Mr. Smith, can you, what is the regulation that currently speaks to this plan?
I'll have to pull that up.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but I'm just trying to make sure what we're, what we're wanting to do, and I know we've all heard this, is that there's some confusion around the O-days. Teachers are confused, inconsistent practices across the, the schools, across a school building, across classrooms has been happening, and Marty, Mr. Smith won't be surprised, because he and I have had numerous conversations about this very regulation. So I'm happy to support a regulation that's going to offer clarity, but I think it might be very helpful for us to embed it in, I'm sorry, revisions, I meant revisions, but I think it might be helpful to us to embed it in the regulation that currently exists that speaks to the communication. I believe it has all of those components. Having said that, I'm happy to support this amendment that is going to offer more clarity in terms of what it is we are actually wanting to have happen, but I hear Ms. Corbett Sanders' point being that it's not broad enough, which is why I want you to maybe give us a little bit of a review of the regulation and how broad that is at that, at this point, if possible.
Sure. It currently, it's Regulation 2234. And the regulation itself is a regulation that is, I'm pulling up the beginning of the regulation, that's really about student absences and attendance, and there is a section in 2234 that's focused on O-days and the types of activities that can occur on O-days.
I'm so sorry, the rest was muffled, but you didn't hear that.
It talks about the types of religious and cultural observances that we've built into the calendar. It's Section E. And then we talk about verified student absences on those days. They may not be designated as unexcused by the principal. And then additionally, we have identified the types of activities that can occur on those days. We have talked about school schedules and what school schedules should look like on those days. We've talked about the class periods following the religious and cultural observances, and then we've talked about what the responsibility of the division would be outside of the individual classroom and school-based administrators and school-based staff on doing those very same things as it relates to division-wide activities.
Thank you so much. Just a quick question for Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. Tolan. Are we looking to comprehensively make that regulation a little bit more robust, which would encompass all of the pieces that you're talking about, versus maybe a more narrow revision, which might just only speak to communication? So are you looking for the former to happen?
So it's my understanding that the superintendent is looking at the Regulation 2234, and that, as Mr. Smith mentioned just a few minutes ago, they're starting that process of looking at it as a result of what we've been doing today in the work session. The purpose of this follow-on motion is that as they do that, that they have to present that plan and make it public so that our, we invest in the professional development or in the, in the communication piece with the staff, we spend the time bringing our community so they know about it, and that any revisions to that regulation, this board is aware of, because as is apparent at this table tonight, and as, as was apparent by who spoke earlier, there's a lot of confusion as to what it is and what it is not. And so if we want clarity, we have to go back and look, make sure that we have the clarity, and then make sure that we have the training that's necessary and the communications that is necessary. It's not just communications.
Madam Chair.
For example, on Schoolology or anything else.
Go ahead, Mr. Smith, and, and just reminding everybody, we have to speak to this amendment.
So going back to some of the questions asked earlier, it's not an issue for us to pull this group together to provide clarity around this work. I was asked earlier by Dr. Anderson, in addition to the regulation that we have, we've also pushed guidance out as part of our Outlook calendar system. We've given invitations to all staff members as a reminder to these days, and as part of that process, we also provided extensive guidance on what to do on those days, and this is something that we can certainly pull the group back together to address this again, talk about what went well, what didn't go well, and create some additional recommendations around these days.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. For resp-
For responding to my questions, you as well. I think I'll just listen a little bit more.
Okay, Ms. Maron?
Honestly, we've been talking about this so much, a little bit muddled. I just continue to, you know, there's been a flurry of amendments coming, or follow-on motions coming in, in the last 24 hours. I am not totally up to speed on this, as we sit here and try and wordsmith it at the table. Once again, just for clarity, Mr. Smith, is this being worked on as part of the regulation? Is that correct, what I heard? This clarity?
So, we are, we're going to make changes to the regulation and send those changes through the regular process. And then, based on the motion here, we can certainly pull this group together to provide more clarity about O days. And so, again, if this is voted on, this is something that we can do as staff to pull the same work group together to provide greater clarity around these days.
Thank you. So, you know, once again, I find myself in this position of saying, okay, this division's doing this work, the school board is asking them to do it. I understand the comment about, you know, we need to solidify things with a vote, and indeed, there's been times where I've sought that action, and it hasn't happened. I think that we could do a better job at directing the superintendent with clearer votes. I think also, I have to say, you know, Ms. Corbett Sanders, you said that it's a failure. Well, it's been done for one year. Half the time of it was during a global pandemic with online learning. We've heard from high school students, I have an elementary school age student. My kids came home this year telling me about holidays I didn't know about. So, I can't just blanketly agree that this was a complete failure. I don't have enough information to know. And again, we've heard from high school students who have a much more complex schedule than the half of the children that are elementary school age children in the division. So, yes, do I think that we need to do more? Yes. I think at this point, we are not doing our best work. I think that if there's a regulation happening, governance can have that role to follow it, if we want to have a work session to talk further about the calendar. But I really think that we are starting to beat this down to a pulp, and it's not productive.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. I did send to everybody just some suggested language, because I appreciate what Mr. Frisch and Ms. Omech have put up here, but I don't think it captures what the original motion, follow-on motion was coming from Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. Tolan. The key factors that we're trying to say is that we would like the superintendent to bring a plan back to the board on how they're going to have these O days and half O day instruction be delivered more effectively, and improves the communication to our teachers, students, and families. I will say that, you know, my nephew, who had just, you know, graduated, and he has many friends who are still in school. And they said that, you know, as a result of these O days, and then talking to principals as well, and yes, you know, it can vary among our 200 schools, from elementary and how they do things. But time and again, what I heard was, there was a lack of clarity. There was concern about following and not teaching new instruction. And so, I had veteran teachers write to me and say, they had students in IB courses staying home, because the whole thing that there was gonna be no instruction, their parents just basically said, well, if you're not gonna learn and you're tired, take mental health day and stay home. So, I think that this is a major departure from what we put in place with best intentions, but it didn't carry forward in putting student instruction at the center of the work we do. I'm grateful that Dr. Braybrand and his team is, they're really committed to this. But our job as a board is not just to set policy. We're the governing body, we have to be the stewards. And when something isn't working, in partnership with the superintendent, we have to make clear as a body what the directive is. So, I can't support this language on the table, and I appreciate that, you know, they were trying to put this together. That's why I emailed to you, the language too, you could all see it. I would suggest that, because this motion belongs to the table, either, if, you know, I can propose that this, I believe to our parliamentarian, I could just say, I move, without objection, that this language replace what's in front of us. And if anybody objects, then we vote this thing down and start all over again. I'm just trying to figure out, what do we do here? Because I'm hearing people say, there's a piece of what Carl and Abra have here, it doesn't capture the original motion. I tried to marry the two in the language I sent to you. So, maybe, Mr. Morgan, if you can just tell me, do we just need to vote this one down and then bring my suggested language up?
Yes, we do, yes.
There's, okay, no more replacing, just, okay.
So, thank you, Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you, well, then, my advocacy would be to vote this down. And then, Ms. Bukarski, I would like to propose this revised language.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, that is noted. Ms. Kies-Gamara?
I was trying to save time, I'm not sure I can do that now. But I think, I think what Ms. Corbett Sanders is trying to communicate, and everybody really, is that it's not just communication or a particular aspect. It's understanding how it's being implemented, and then going back to address those problems. We oftentimes, we have very good intentions in putting certain things in place, but then we end up having a fidelity problem. And I think the language that everybody's talking about is where, is, that's where we're trying to get. How do we get to a level of fidelity where it minimizes the confusion around O days? And that can be communication, it can also be, you know, making sure we understand what's happening from school to school. So, that would be my clarification. I understood the original motion to be that way. I also see people trying to move to that direction. So, I just was trying to minimize things, but perhaps it's too late for that. So, I just wanted to provide that, hopefully, a little bit authority, I think.
Thank you, Ms. Kies-Gamara. I have Ms. Tolan.
Okay.
Ms. Tolan, do you wanna, you're on the list, do you want to speak?
We're still speaking to Ms. Omech's, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't support that, because I don't think it's, it deals with the effectiveness that we're looking for, so.
Okay, Mr., am I calling, who's, Mr. Frisch? Okay.
I called the question.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment on the screen, please raise your hands. No, oh, I'm sorry, all those in favor of calling the question, I got way ahead of myself. Okay, wow, that looks to be unanimous, folks, I believe. Okay, let's call, let's call the question. All those in favor of the amended language on the screen, please raise your hands. All those opposed? Okay, anyone abstaining? No. The amended language fails. We now go back to the main motion. Is there another amendment? I call on Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you, I would ask the clerk, Ms. Medea, if you could put up the language I sent to you and the board members.
As a substitute motion.
Is that right, Mr. Morgan? This is, the amendment is a substitute motion? Or it's just amending the language? Can we just say we're amending the language? To say that, my motion is to amend the language with the following, as posted by our clerk of the board. And I can read it, just for those who are at home. I move to direct the superintendent to bring a plan back to the school board for how O day and half O day instruction will be delivered more effectively and improve communication to teachers, students, and families.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Corbett Sanders. Would you like to speak to this, or?
No, just briefly to say, I think this captures where the board was trying to go, and greatly appreciate that, I know Dr. Braybrand will want to help us with this effort.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I think we've all spoken to it.
I won't disagree. Ms. Maron? Oh, go ahead.
There is a word missing, I believe, from the motion, instruction, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is that right, Ms. McLaughlin? Is that your intention?
Oh, yes, it's just, there's no S on improves.
Right.
That was a grammatical correction from Ms. Tolan, not your fault, Ms. Medea.
Excellent, I'm sorry, Ms. Maron, go ahead.
So, we just added into the calendar four days that reflect cultural observances. So, those are four fewer O days. And according to our analysis, were the ones that caused the most frustration and missed school. So, we're talking about communicating about these O days when we've just solved the problem of confusion for the O days for the four most often missed days. Again, I feel like we're, it just seems like we're treating this as it was being done last year, and not as it is now. So, I just, I think this is not what I'd prefer.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. I don't see anyone else. Oh, Ms. Omech?
Yeah, I had to clarify, sorry, after the language change. So, I want to understand from staff that this is communicating more effective implementation on the instructional side of this, as opposed to revisiting the already agreed-upon policy? Is that how you are understanding this?
Yes, I'm understanding this, is that we're going to pull our work group back together with the language that we've discussed here, where there will be new instruction, and talk about how we can do just what this does, to talk about instruction, how it can be delivered more effectively, and then improve communications to teachers. And part of that is to talk to the work group and ask what went well with O days, what didn't, given these new parameters? How can we improve upon O days for all of our students and staff? And ensure that everyone in the community understands it. This is something that we can do.
Does that include the possibility of having instruction on O days?
There will be instruction on, there will be new instruction on O days. And so, we need to talk about, again, that teachers will be expected to have new information in the learning management system for those students who are going to recognize O days. That, again, we'll get feedback on what worked, what didn't work, and work with all of our stakeholders to ensure that we can implement this in a way that is beneficial for everyone.
Yeah, I mean, because it was my understanding from our work session discussion that we would not want to move in the direction of providing new instruction on O days, but perhaps we can be more creative about, you know, offering kids things that are not just watching a movie in class, right? We all agree that's not effective. So, I'm a little bit concerned that this is the same as the previous language, if that's what we're understanding from it. And that's what I was afraid I would not be able to support, as I think some of my colleagues might agree. So, yeah, unless you guys have anything additional to clarify about this not being a potential reversal of that, I certainly don't want to see instruction on these, new instruction that will make it difficult for certain students over others.
Ms. Omech, I believe Mr. Smith does have a clarification from what was shared with us.
So, no, we did talk at the work session, and many board members spoke about how O days weren't working. And so, we shared that we would allow new instruction on O days, but that we would codify in the regulation that teachers would have to ensure that new information and materials were on the learning management system for students to take advantage of. And we discussed in the presentation some of the things that would still be disallowed. So, tryouts, tests, quizzes, those types of things. We did have that discussion. So, we can certainly work with this group to talk about how we better implement that moving forward. And again, it goes back to, it's a group of stakeholders from across the school division, operational, instructional, school-based administrators, we had parents. This is something that we certainly see us being able to do.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we are ready to vote on the amendment to this motion, which is on the screen in blue. If you can support that, please raise your hand. Dr. Anderson, Ms. Tolan, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Darnatt Kofax, Ms. Seismohizer, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Omech, Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders, Ms. Kies-Gamara, and myself. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Ms. Maron, that amendment to the main motion passes. We're now gonna go back to the main motion. Are there any school board members wishing to speak? Seeing none, the main motion is on the screen. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Dr. Anderson, Ms. Tolan, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Darnatt Kofax, Seismohizer, and Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Omech, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Kies-Gamara, and myself. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Ms. Maron, that passes. You all are giving me a lot of practice on this Robert's Rules thing. All right, let's pull up the script. I now call on Ms. McLaughlin for a motion.
Just get my glasses on. I move to direct the superintendent to benchmark the number of early release days and professional work days embedded in FCPS's 180-day school year calendar in comparison to Arlington, Prince William, and Loudoun. Upon consultation with employee organizations, the superintendent will report his findings to the board, along with potential recommendations to help reduce the disruption of student learning.
Is there a second? Ms. Corbett Sanders? Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, just briefly, as I shared information with my colleagues. In, again, researching school calendars in our neighboring jurisdictions, I noted that FCPS has the highest number of combined early release days and professional working days for our teachers as compared to the other three largest Northern Virginia districts. My concern, again, for our students and for the working families is that other school districts try and do this either before the start of the school year or after the end of the school year. It isn't to say we would change anything, I just think that the analysis needs to be done. I think we really, this motion is to absolutely respect and honor our employee association input in this process. But I also think that the board needs to have that deeper understanding, because we really do have the largest number of combined days. And I think we have to figure out, is this the best way we deliver the calendar? As Dr. Anderson noted, a parent had emailed us and said, you know, or it was actually a teacher as well, how is it that Loudoun starts on August 29th, ends on June 8th, and we're gonna be starting on August 22nd and ending on June 16th? I just think that examination, we benefit from that, from all angles. I hope you'll support this.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I meant to say, and I did talk to Dr. Braybrand about it, and he was supportive of this analysis.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I appreciate Ms. McLaughlin coming forward with this motion. We all consistently hear from our staff and our community asking us the why we do things one way versus another. Similar to my earlier motions, the follow-on, this follow-on motion increases transparency and encourages the superintendent and his team to look at how we might learn from how other communities or other districts do things. This is especially important in light of the superintendent's budget proposal, which requests additional resources for professional development. Ideally, looking at how others are doing things, we can continuously improve our own process. And so, this transparency is, and fresh look is always helpful, I think.
Thank you. Any other board members wishing to speak? I'm gonna sneak over and look at the lights. I don't see anyone else wishing to speak, so I will call for the vote. So, I'll call for the vote, the motion before us is on the screen. All those in favor? That is Dr. Anderson, Ms. Tolan, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Darnatt Kofax, myself, Ms. Corbett Sanders. All those opposed? Oh, Ms. Kies-Gamara, thank you, Ms. Kies-Gamara. All those opposed? Ms. Maron, Mr. Frisch? Oops, you're not opposed, Mr. Frisch? All those abstaining, so, let me say, all those opposed, Ms. Maron? All those abstaining, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Omech?
I'll vote for this.
That motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Seismohizer. Thank you, Ms. Seizmore Heiser. Number five. Who is doing this? I call on Ms. McLaughlin for another motion.
I move to direct the superintendent to work with applicable employee associations in determining the official designation for each of the 14 professional work days. These designations may include teacher work day, professional development, and staff development. This action should be completed by the end of this academic year and then results reported back to the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Darnatt Kofax, Ms. McLaughlin.
Yes, as I shared with board members when I emailed this to you earlier, I was really pleased, again, to have the support of Dr. Braybrand. And during the discussion that Chairman Prikarsky and I had at the 4510 Employee Associations meeting yesterday, it was also expressed that this would be very helpful to all 200 principals as well as for their staff and teachers to just have clarity around which days were going to be teacher-directed, which ones would be principal and staff building-directed, and which one would be division-wide directed. This is something that, from my first year on the board with Ms. Darnatt Kofax, the board did give this direction to Superintendent Jack Dale at the time, just saying that our teachers had said, as professionals, it's really important for them at times to have that clarity and to have that clarity between principals and teachers on what is their teacher-directed time. So I tried to keep it broad. That's why it said "may" include these designations. There's maybe something we didn't consider, but most importantly, I hope my colleagues will, again, support this. In examining the other school divisions around Northern Virginia, Arlington, Prince William, and Loudoun, they give this specific designation for each of these days. I think it's a really great practice, and I hope that you'll all support this motion.
Thank you. Ms. Darnatt Kofax?
Ms. McLaughlin spelled it out well, but I just want to add, in the past, as she noted, there has been confusion, and there has been times where this became an issue where teachers and principals were not seeing things the same way. So clarity is always best, so everybody understands what is before them, what's expected of them. And I understand this was something that Ms. McLaughlin was with you, Ms. Prikarsky, in yesterday's meeting for the teacher associations and principal associations, and they all thought that this was a good idea as well. So I would appreciate that clarity, as we have had in the past. Somehow, we got away from it, but I think it needs to be reinstated and listed very
Seeing nobody else wishing to speak, we'll go ahead and take the vote. Oh, okay, Ms. Cohen has a question.
So, sorry, just a quick clarification. Maybe Dr. Braybrand or Mr. Smith can help with this. I just wanted to make sure where it says "work with applicable employee associations", does that include our support employee associations as well? Or...sorry.
Yes. Yes, and this is one where the board is codifying work that we're already planning to do, and we'll have it complete before the school year wraps up. So our teachers and all of our staff know exactly what those days will look like for them, and our principals too. What's going to be school-based? What's going to be teacher individual time for themselves, and what's going to be division-based? Thank you.
And if I could add, Dr. Braybrand, that this is a unique year because of some recommendations that were coming as part of the budget process. And so knowing that there were still some days out there that we would need to build in, that we would be developing the designation for these days in time for the employee calendar.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I just wanted to add something to Ms. Cohen's question. So one of the things during yesterday's 4510 meeting is that the employees did say it was something that their boards noticed in the calendar, that they weren't designated, and there was some concern. I truly appreciate that Dr. Braybrand's saying that they're getting some of this work done, but I thought that not just about codifying it from the board's direction and the board's position of direction and where our values are, I thought this would be a really nice way of just demonstrating how much our board supports all of our employees and the importance of having this clarity. So I do hope that people will support this because I think it's an important way that we officially are on record for this. Thank you.
Ms. Cohen?
I just wanted to ask, were the support employees at the 4510 yesterday?
I did not see Mr. Swan there, and I did see his email asking what happened. Again, I was just an invited board member, so I can't speak to what happened, but they are absolutely an applicable and important association.
Perfect. Thanks so much for clarifying that, Ms. McLaughlin.
I'll support it, sorry.
Okay, folks. Okay, thank you. All those in favor of this motion, please raise your hands. Dr. Anderson, Ms. Tolan, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Darnatt Kofax, Ms. Seizmore Heiser, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Omesh, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Keys-Gamara, and myself. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Ms. Marin, that passes. Are we all done? Ooh. No, one more. And I will now call on Ms. Keys-Gamara. My apologies, Ms. Keys-Gamara.
No worries. I thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for those board members I was able to reach today to discuss this. I wanted to...I didn't speak to the calendar just because I wanted to be expeditious, but I believe we're all trying to work toward that inclusiveness and caring culture. And I...the purpose of this motion is, I'm sorry, is to have continuous improvement. I move that the board direct the superintendent to provide a detailed communications and outreach plan for the development of the 2023-2024 calendar to the board by October 15th, 2022. The plan should include a timeline for public engagement, a comprehensive list of community stakeholders representing the diversity of Fairfax County, which utilize multiple modes of communication with the public and allow for timely deliberation by the board.
Is there a second?
Here.
Seconded by Mr. Frisch, Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Yes, I will be brief. I mean, we've had lots of discussion about the importance of community participation and clear communication with our community. We want to hear from parents. We want them to participate, and we want them to know what to expect in this process. So that's the intent of this, and I think it will...even though I think we're improving each year, and my hope is that this will assist us in that continuous improvement. So, thank you.
Mr. Frisch?
Very briefly. I will never turn down an opportunity to do community engagement a little bit better. And one thing I will say as Chair of Public Engagement, we will be working with OCCR in the months ahead to...you know, this board recently passed a family engagement policy. And I know OCCR has been working very hard to engage the public. And now that we have that policy, I think it's time to develop some best practices in a public way, so the public can see what our best practices are, so that we are equipped with a menu of all the different things we can do to engage the public whenever we're engaged in these big-ticket items like the calendar or the superintendent search or the budget or CIP, all the other things that we want to get the community engaged on: name changes, boundary changes, school construction projects, all these different things that we want to engage the community on, so that we don't feel like we're recreating the wheel frequently. So that work will continue. I think this is perfectly in line with that. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I just want to say to Ms. Keys-Gamara, Mr. Frisch, thank you so much for bringing this follow-on motion together. As you know, from my remarks since the work session in this evening, I, as an individual board member, was concerned. I just didn't feel like the two weeks was enough time for us to publish a calendar, draft calendar, and get all of the stakeholder feedback that I believe was needed and necessary. And frankly, also for even the 12 of us. We've had so much on our plate in the last two weeks alone, and I think we always do much better work when we have time to talk with one another. I want to thank everybody right here and now for your graciousness in considering all these follow-on motions, including this one. I think this would be a really great step forward and allows us to best partner with the superintendent and his team going forward. So I hope this has everybody's full support.
Ms. Omesh?
Yeah, I want to start by thanking my colleagues for bringing this forward. I know we've had extensive conversations about the importance of this, and hopefully, you know, equity not just being a macro idea, that we're looking at disenfranchised groups as a whole, but also micro in how we do that and really being equitable and intentional about understanding our communities and making sure everyone's voice is heard at a fair level or at least proportionate to our stakeholders. I just had a question about the date, the deadline, just given our...I don't know, you know, superintendent hiring timeline, et cetera, if that's something we want to keep in mind. Maybe if you guys can just provide a little bit of clarification around that?
I would imagine that staff would have time to work on this in advance and that they would bring the new superintendent in on it in time to make it work. I don't know if Ms. Keys-Gamara agrees with that assessment, but...
Absolutely. And I mean, this is, of course, we want to put that date in there because we don't want to have to feel like in January or February, we've only got, you know, 10 days to discuss something. But certainly, we considered that in trying to put that date in there. Certainly, it should be after we have a new superintendent, but we still have to...we have to prepare a calendar every year. So we want to do it well ahead of time to allow appropriate public engagement that, you know, conform...conforms with best practices. So that's what I can add. Certainly, if staff has a problem, they can come back to us and say so, but this is a good...I think this is a good target.
Yeah, no, I certainly want to hear from Mr. Smith before I just conclude here, but I guess the thinking is we're now in the end of January, and just, you know, considering if we want to have a public engagement process, we had our work session not too long ago, are we setting ourselves up for failure by putting in place a deadline that might be too early, given that transition? I don't know. I'm not trying to be obstructionist here. I support this piece, but I just don't want us to end up with a follow-on that's not followed up on and then, you know, have that be because we didn't set it up for success. But, Mr. Smith, what does that look like for you in projecting the timeline?
My colleagues have said I've been able to talk quite a bit this evening, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I would say that as we look at the calendar development process, we normally want to start that engagement in the October timeframe. So I would have to work with the Office of Communication and Community Relations in terms of establishing the timeline for community engagement, but certainly, we would want to have a timeline developed by October.
Okay, so this is feasible for you to have a plan by that point?
Yeah.
Even with a superintendent transition? I just don't want us to end up in October 15th saying, hey, this wasn't done, we need more time, the whole thing.
Again, we know that we would have to engage with our calendar development process in the October timeframe, and so we would certainly want to have something pulled together before then.
Okay, thank you. And I think, Ms. Keys-Gamara, I appreciate you anticipating some of the challenges with this so that hopefully, we can have a discussion before that's even implemented perhaps and perfecting that as much as possible, making it as good as possible, so that we can move forward with it in advance of having that calendar. So, thank you.
Ms. Darnatt Kofax?
I just want to thank the maker of the motion for bringing this forward. Ms. Keys-Gamara, you and I had exchanged communications about this, so I appreciate it. And as I said, I think while I am pleased where we ended, I think there's lots of room for improvement, and this gives an outline of where to begin and what we can do moving forward to continue...to provide continuous improvement. So, thank you.
Ms. Tolan?
Yes, thank you. I do, as I mentioned to Ms. Keys-Gamara earlier today, it's a little bit hard for me to vote against, you know, increased public engagement. That's always something I feel strong about. And so I want to thank Mr. Frisch, too, for reminding us about the, you know, family engagement process that we were talking about and that we're already working on. And I just wanted to also point out that the other follow-on motions that we've talked about earlier this evening fit very nicely with this one, you know, talking about having, you know, two or more calendars for people to take a look at and, you know, delineating the O-days as we move forward. That all fits right into this motion as well. So, you know, some of that work will be done. I do want to mention one of the other big points of advocacy that I've had from constituents is if there was any way to get the calendar earlier so that they would be able to plan, you know, as families for the following year, that that would be nice. So, just putting that out on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you. And thank you to both Ms. Keys-Gamara and Mr. Frisch for this motion. I actually think it's wonderful to be the capstone motion of the evening on the budget...on the calendar, because this really does kind of tie all of the earlier motions together to build that plan that would come to us. It also recognizes by setting a timeframe of mid-October that it gives the flexibility for staff to continue to do the job that they do, because after all, we are a large organization, a going concern, and although we very much appreciate the role of the superintendent, we also know that the superintendent has a team that supports his or her efforts, and so we know that they will continue to work and be able to welcome our new superintendent with some initial plans that the new superintendent could then provide extra guidance or input to. The other piece of this is that in the spirit of continuous improvement, it puts together more of a structure that says, you know, these are the things that this board values. We value transparency. We value communications. We value engagement with our community, where we are continuously focused on student achievement and keeping our students' success at the center. And when we build our calendar, a key part of that is always remembering the impact on our students. So I very much appreciate what you all have brought forward this evening and the timing that you associated with it.
Ms. McLaughlin, did you...put your light on?
Yeah, just briefly, because I appreciate where Ms. Omesh's concerns were. Certainly, in my time on the board, what I've seen is anytime we've asked something of the superintendent and his team with a deadline, if they hit a snag, they just come back to the chair and vice chair in consultation to say, you know, this has come up and it's going to take a little longer. But in particular, I really appreciate Mr. Smith's response that this is just simply giving a deadline for the plan. And if we really are trying to be, you know, more timely with the calendar, we would need a plan by this date in order to execute on the plan. And as one board member who, you know, I think we all really like being able to facilitate the school systems communication out to our families, a lot of times, they're saying they read our newsletters, and that's where they learn about things. So once we have the plan and the timeline, we can also be more mindful at getting things out, knowing where that's going to come. I certainly was taken by surprise by where we found ourselves on the calendar timeline from when we got it to when we posted it publicly to when we voted on it. So I really like that this will help all of us in this shared work. So I really want to thank Ms. Keys-Gamara again, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. I'm just giving a little nod to you that I know you were helpful in this, too.
Okay, thank you. I'll also be voting on this, and, you know, the October timeline pretty much is in line where this year, we had the calendar process kind of first shared with us. You know, I think there's always lots of room for improvement, especially when it comes to stakeholder engagement. We've got a wonderful communications team who is, you know, really perfecting some of the best practices in stakeholder engagement and in multilingual engagement. So I do see areas where that can definitely be approved. And, you know, what I heard from my community is mostly they just want to know, and they would prefer to know, what the calendar is a lot sooner than later. So with that, I... So with that, I see, Ms. Kies-Gamara, you'd like to speak again?
Just really quickly, I think with us having a new calendar and the school board will be able to plan our meetings in October around getting feedback and letting folks know that this calendar process is beginning. So that's all part of my thinking. So, thank you, guys.
Okay. Dr. Anderson? I guess that is, that is time for us to vote. All those in favor of this motion, raise your hands. And that is unanimous. Excellent. That motion passes. Okay, agenda item 503. Good job, everyone. Pre-K 2 devices. Calling on Ms. Corbett-Sanders for this motion.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the school board approve the purchase of up to 43,000 devices at the total cost of $18.4 million with the local share of $2.1 million to be funded from the school board flexibility reserve and upon delivery file for the reimbursement with the ECF grant fund for $16.3 million.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Tolan. Ms. Corbett-Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In August of 2021, the Fairfax County Public Schools IT Department took advantage of an opportunity offered by the Federal Communications Commission to submit a proposal for an emergency connectivity fund reimbursement grant. The grant required a specific proposal for the purchase of equipment to provide sufficient access to learning for families. Given the technology purchases already made during the pandemic to address both devices and access for students, IT submitted a proposal focused on the last remaining group of students without a sufficient device for learning at school or at home, and that is the pre-K through second grade students. The proposal included more age-appropriate iPad devices with keyboard case for students in grades pre-K and K, as well as Windows non-touch laptop devices for students in grades 1 and 2. Fairfax County Public Schools was allocated $18 million in the reimbursement grant for that purpose, for that proposal, and the pre-K through 2 cross-departmental project team recommended leveraging these funds to support our youngest learners. So the staff is requesting that the school board flexibility reserve funding of $2.1 million in order to access $16.3 million in a federal grant from the FCC to purchase up to 43,000 devices. And so I urge my colleagues that we support this request from the superintendent and we meet the needs of our youngest learners. We did have a robust discussion at the board table last week about this and how these are not a substitute for good teaching, but that they are actually another tool in the tool chest. And so with that, I just appreciate your support.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan.
Just a couple of very quick comments. Thank you to my colleague, Ms. Corbett-Sanders, for going into all the budget details of this. I just, you know, anecdotally was in some kindergarten classrooms not too long ago and experienced firsthand the slow computers that our little ones are working with right now and the difficulty. I will admit also that with our recent virtual snow day, I heard from a number of families with small children, the difficulties that they had dealing with the old computers and things that these kids are working with. So, you know, given this grant opportunity that we have the availability of, and, you know, I want to applaud our staff for, you know, moving forward and taking advantage of this creative way to be able to fund these devices, you know, I would like to support this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. I'm happy to support this motion, but I do want to highlight something similarly to you, Ms. Tolan, given that we had the virtual snow day and, of course, for other purposes as we have students who have to be at home because of COVID restrictions. Having access to use these devices at home is key. We really have to have more opportunity for some of our students who don't have their own streaming and their own internet connections at home. I'm still hearing even as late as last night about parents who during the snow day did not have MiFi devices or the length of the MiFi was used and they were not able to access instruction during the time that they needed to. So I would love to hear, how are we going to strengthen that access for our students? Because it continues to be an issue in my community.
I can certainly speak to the MiFi's we have right now. We have 2,800 MiFi's. We have 2,800 MiFi's already out in the system, and students who are experiencing difficulties should certainly reach back out to their T-specs and they can resolve them. We just got a new shipment of devices which we can swap out if there are individual issues, but we continue to provide those MiFi devices available to all students who need them within our buildings.
Are they unlimited in terms of their usage or what is the limit, what's the daily limit? Because that is a big issue.
We can certainly check on them. I can confirm that with the team and come back and see where we are using more. Maybe these are instances where individual students have or families have more than one student and they're going above limits. So we can confirm and get back to you on that and to those families, obviously.
Thank you. The reason why I raise this at this point is while we're making this significant investment, it won't mean a thing if those devices are sitting in homes and are essentially bricks because connectivity is not available. So I cannot stress enough the fact that we should be surveying our schools, our principals, our teachers to ensure that our families have what they need, whether it be a virtual learning day, a virtual snow day, or issues with having to stay at home to have instruction because of COVID transmission, because right now, it is not sufficient in many of my schools. So I would love to talk to you further about that because the limited MiFi's is insufficient for us.
We can certainly talk on that.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. McLaughlin?
Just briefly, although I will say, Ms. Bukarski, I think we're pretty close to our, not too far off from our timeline. We vote fast. We vote fast. But Mr. Sethi, as our chief information officer, I really appreciate the work you do for such a large division. And during the work session, you were very helpful to me and several colleagues who wanted to just better understand this type of investment. I mean, very fortunate with the grant funding that, of $18 million, the Fairfax County taxpayers are going to only see a $2 million hit to our funds, and $16 million is great. But I was just wondering, for those who, many don't catch our work sessions, if you could just capture again the incredible return on investment this will bring to our division, the educational tool benefit that we've talked about. But again, what would happen if we were having to do this on our own, you know, and how soon this could, you know, affect our budget with a big hit if we weren't to pass this?
Certainly. Some of the devices we have, and we mentioned this in our work session, 85% of those devices are what we consider obsolete. So they are end-of-life, repairing them, bringing them back costs us more, and obviously, they don't work in the classrooms. So this refresh will allow us to get up to 43,000 devices for $18.3 million, of which we'll only be outlaying $2 million out of our own budget, $2.1 million out of our own budget. So the return on investment is there, and these devices, given they will be brand-new, will obviously last four years, which is our baseline, and sometimes you can even go longer as we are seeing with the current devices.
Great, thank you so much, and I really appreciate everybody involved in helping us to maximize, you know, new digital devices for our students. And I just want to emphasize again what was said earlier to parents. It is a tool. We know it does not replace, especially for our youngest learners, the direct instruction that we know is so important for them with their teachers. But in this 21st century, we also know having an effective digital tool is how you can have the optimal instruction. So I can support this today.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Cohen?
Thanks so much. I know, Mr. Sethi, I've been particularly hard on you about these devices and how we chose the right ones and how important it was to have our ESPits and T-specs and our teachers of the younger grades involved in this election here. So I really appreciate you and Ms. Kamenko going back to the drawing board after we, what did we say a few years ago? Professionally interrogate. While we professionally interrogated the decision-making, and I think we all came away from that work session feeling so much better about the inclusive way that the choices were made and how they were honoring your vision of how they wanted to work. So I just want to say thank you again. I know that was extra work at a time when there is no extra time for extra things, but thank you for helping us better understand how these would be utilized and why it was important to be able to take advantage and not leave this money on the table. And I agree very much with Dr. Anderson's sentiments. I certainly had some folks reaching out about frustrations with the old clunkers during the snow break, so I think they'll be very happy to hear this. So thank you again.
Ms. Seizmarheiser?
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just want to just, first, I appreciate the makers of this motion, and I will be supporting it tonight. I, similar to what was been shared already, I'm really, I think, by Ms. McLaughlin, thank you for our staff finding a way to make this fiscally much more palatable for us. You know, it's hard not to take advantage of this grant, so thank you for finding that opportunity and then patiently listening to us while we made sure this was as good of an opportunity, as you said. So thank you for that. Ms. Kamenko, I know you had mentioned during the work session, I just wanted, but it hasn't really come up today in terms of, in addition to the devices, putting some guidelines, guardrails around the use of the devices to make sure they really are used to enhance instruction. So can you just sort of talk about that briefly?
Absolutely. So let's first keep in mind that the students already have devices in their classrooms, right? So we already are very aware and very careful around the guidance we provide to teachers around how to use the devices in the most appropriate ways in the classroom. But we want to ensure, as I think Ms. McLaughlin said, that these in no way replace the teachers, right? There's, they are a tool that is used, as Ms. Karen Corbett-Sanders said, that allows students to have more personalization at specific times for differentiation, allows them to express themselves creatively, but it does not replace, it does not replace the teacher time, the small group time, the whole class time, the interactions that you have with peers. So we would not expect to see students on devices all day long at all, and I think if you went to our classrooms today, you wouldn't see that. That's not, that's not the mindset of our pre-K through 2 teachers. They understand that, you know, teaching and learning is mostly a human endeavor. And so these tools really are the ability to, as I said, differentiate, provide special data to teachers so they can be more responsive and provide that opportunity to start to build those digital literacy and digital citizenship skills.
Great, thank you. And for all the reasons mentioned, especially in terms of students homesick, COVID isolation, virtual snow days, I think it's really important for our little ones especially to have devices that aren't so slow and clunky because the last thing we want them to do is get frustrated with learning. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Are there any other school board members wishing to speak? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your work on this. And, oh, okay, well, I will let Ms. Somesh go before me.
Okay, I'm not going to prolong this. I do want to thank staff from the bottom of my heart. I know this has been frustrating. You guys brought it the first time. We had to come back echoing a lot of what my colleagues said, so I won't repeat that. I just do want to celebrate that we didn't mention from the work session what we found out, that these devices will also expand access for kids with disabilities, kids who communicate differently, and kids who speak different languages or whose first language is not English, because these devices, unlike their predecessor, the clunkers, as Lorgin called them, didn't provide that. So I think that's another win we ought to mention. Thank you.
Okay. And I thank you as well for bearing with us. I know we've asked you a lot of questions and to come back, but I think it's really important, and it's not a surprise to all of you, because I've said it many times, I always worry how we are utilizing these tools, especially with our youngest learners, when we know that those fine motor skills are so closely linked to brain development and to their reading and literacy skills and ensuring that we are very prudent and that, you know, most of the day is filled in those social teacher-student, student-student interactions, and these are used to supplement. And I think, you know, that is part of our professional development, as I understand it, and something that we continue to ensure that we hit upon as we talk with our teachers. So thank you. And with that, we will go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor of the motion as written on the screen in front of you, please raise your hands. And that is unanimous. Thank you. That motion passes. Whew, that was a fast one. All right. Consent agenda, agenda item 6.
Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. The consent agenda items are on the screen. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved.
All right. Agenda item number 7, Board Committee Reports. I'll call on Ms. Tolan and Mr. Frisch to give us an update from Joint Environmental Task Force Committee.
All right, thank you. We had our final official meeting of the Joint Environmental Task Force on, just last week, January 19th, and we had a quick review from both county staff and school staff on where they are on the various goals that we set last year. It was very exciting. Our solar contracts are signed and ready to go, and so work will begin to put solar panels on Anandale High School. This work will begin soon. We will have some additional information coming up very soon in a Braveran briefing related to the possibility of canopy solar installations on some of our parking lots for some of our schools where we can add to solar installations on the roof. Mr. Frisch and I asked staff to get creative and to give us this information. We met with them in December, and then we met again in January. In December, we really asked our staff to give us some more specific information about what they really need to be able to move forward on these goals. And they came back at this last meeting with some kind of creative ideas, and we heard a little bit about some of them at the budget hearing just earlier this week from some of our constituents. One of the suggestions was to reorganize our efforts to bring together the FCPS staff that have significant roles in this work into a new office, similar to the county has their Office of Environment and Energy. One idea for a name of this office was the Office of Carbon Neutrality. And as I said, some of you may have heard our constituents talk about this at the budget hearing. I might suggest, if we are going to go forward with a new office, that we have a student contest to come up with a name for that office. We've heard from so many eloquent student speakers on sustainability issues that I think that our students would be great people to go out to on this one. This new office idea is a possible way to help us, as I mentioned, more clearly mirror what the county is doing and also allow us as a district to more closely coordinate with the county, coordinate across FCPS, and really allow us to monitor and measure our progress on these goals and the costs associated with the goals. Discussions are just beginning on what this structure might look like. You know, we're thinking perhaps safe routes to school, energy management, waste management, sustainable buildings, and get-to-green coordination could happen in this new structure. Of course, the office would need to work closely with ISD, food services, procurement, and transportation. Mr. Frisch and I are working with the budget staff and the JET team to come up with discussion points for, you know, this year's budget and the outlook. and the out years. That's the biggest news. You all did receive specific, more specific updates on energy, waste management, transportation, and workforce developments in a letter that was sent to you earlier this month. Mr. Frisch, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah. So, as we close this chapter in our work around, you know, with the county around the Joint Environmental Task Force, a new door, our new chapters is beginning, how we're going to accomplish these recommendations that the boards have approved. And I can tell you that we're already making progress, as these documents will show you. And the other members of the Joint Environmental Task Force from the community, from our schools, our students, we're very excited to hear the progress that is already happening, and they're very eager to see even more progress in the future. So, I think we can do that for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. We are now down to agenda item eight, which is Board Matters. So, I will go ahead and start by calling on Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Madam Chair, I'm going to give the gift of time and pass this evening.
Ooh, I'll take that. Ms. Somesh.
All right. We had a robust discussion tonight. I did want to just make sure. I recognized that next Tuesday is Lunar New Year, and so, we want to wish all of our community members a blessed holiday, the Year of the Tiger. And I wanted to just read a quick quote from a beloved mentee at Anandale High School, proud son of Vietnamese refugees, who shares what the holiday means to him. He says that Lunar New Year is about being compassionate and excited for what is to come for yourself, extending that to others in your life and community, and telling the people you love why you love them. So, wishing everyone a blessed start to the Lunar New Year. And finally, I, I know that this has been a stressful period of time, kind of evaluating, you know, the position we have to take as a school division to protect our students, to make sure our stakeholders are safe, while at the same time, you know, receiving different instruction from the governor. And I know our chairwoman has done an incredible job being articulate about the school division's position. I, I did want to just lend, you know, a call perhaps to say that, you know, I certainly can't relate to racism, but I can relate to the feeling of being so unheard that you no longer trust a system or trust what's happening. And I can perhaps even relate to how faith inspires some to speak up. And so, you know, the easier choice for me would be to laugh or to dismiss or to look away from the concerns of some that they're raising or what they're facing, but that's certainly no way to lead us into the future. And I'm hopeful that as we move forward, we can be on the same page about ensuring that we follow guidance that is, you know, ensuring that we are going to be safe and continue to be healthy and, and have mostly schools that are able to stay open, because we have not tried anything other than that up to this point. So, I hope that we can learn from one another and, and start these conversations with empathy and understanding on the community level, because the alternative certainly is something that is not to the benefit of any of us. But with that, have a good night, everyone, and let's celebrate the fact that we had a great step forward today for Fairfax County and that we'll be starting the year next year with an inclusive, more effective calendar for everyone.
Mr. Frisch, followed by Ms. Cohen.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, I've had the opportunity to visit some great schools. Earlier this week, I was on hand with Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Seizmarheiser at Woodson High School to cheer on Dr. Carlin Floyd, as she was named Region Five Outstanding Principal of the Year. Very exciting. One of the things I always enjoy about school visits is seeing teachers do their work. They have such passion, so much commitment, so much endurance. It's always inspiring. On Monday, we heard some chatter from Richmond that an email address has been set up to report supposedly divisive teachers to the government for some sort of list that's being kept. As if the past two years haven't been hard enough on school staff, in the middle of a hiring crisis, no less, now they're being used as pawns. Well, I know I'm only a school board member, but my email address is readily available, and believe me, people use it. I would love to hear from parents and students. So, please email me, reporting praise for your talented, thoughtful, and caring educators. Actually, I get plenty of emails about our amazing staff. Don't email me. Email them. Email your teachers. Email me. Email your principals. Email your counselors and your custodians and your food service workers and bus drivers and subs and all the other incredible people who are keeping our schools open. Tell them thank you. Tell them how much they are appreciated. Tell them you have their backs, because I promise you this, they do not hear it often enough. And they are not paid anywhere near enough for the divisive garbage that's being thrown at them by people who know better, but do it anyways. I appreciate you, and I know everybody in this room appreciates you too. Thanks.
The prevention of genocide starts on the benches of our schools. I found this quote to be particularly meaningful on this Holocaust Remembrance Day. Every person on this board believes, and many of the speakers tonight spoke to the need for us to teach our real history. But even if we're able to do that here, our children across the Commonwealth, across this country, may be denied learning about things that have been troubling or divisive. Equating masks to yellow stars is dangerous. Saying that unvaccinated people are treated worse than Anne Frank is dangerous. This is all dangerous rhetoric, as dangerous as our former school board member, whom I defeated, saying that our schools should teach both sides of the Holocaust. Now that former board member has been put in charge of instruction, instruction, for the entire Commonwealth. On this and every Holocaust Remembrance Day, we will not forget and we will not be silenced, because what we say and do matters. But what we teach our children matters the most. And it is truly the only way that we can ensure that genocide never happens again and that no one ever believes that there were two sides to the Holocaust. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Derna Kofax, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen, for those, those words. That is, it, it has been quite a few weeks here. And as you're saying, today is Holocaust Remembrance Day, and it is so maddening when people make the comments that you referenced, where we are, where you're calling us Nazis because we are making you wear a mask to keep our children safe. That is, that is untenable to me and to my family. And I hope people can, who choose to disagree with us, can take a stance that is less hurtful and more educated, to be quite honest with you. So, I, I'm just going to move on to other things that are happening in my district. There will be a COVID vaccine clinic at Lynbrook Elementary School on February 1st at 4:00 PM. I do want to tell parents that academic advising has begun at your schools, so get involved and help your students with their classes and their electives. Edison High School, congratulations to your forensic team for advancing to regionals in the BHSL tournament. And also at Edison High School, they'll be holding an open house this Saturday for their academy, for all of their academy classes, from 10:00 AM to 1:00. And congratulations to the Mount Vernon Theater Arts production of Three Women and an Onion. They took, they placed, I know, what a great, I didn't see it, but it sounds great. And they will, they placed at a national district competition, and they'll be advancing to regionals on Saturday, February 6th. So, you, I think I would love to see that because the title sounds inspiring. So, thank you all, and have a good evening.
Good evening. I, I do want to join some of the solemn remarks that my colleagues have shared about Holocaust remembrance this evening. As someone who, like many of us here, had college courses in the subject matter, read books, watched documentaries and films, every single one of them, every time you read them, you can't believe that mankind could ever allow something like that to happen. And so, I appreciate that this is being raised tonight. And I know that many of us have continued to advocate and ensure that in the curriculum that FCPS teaches, that we continue to do honor to this subject, because genocide is, is something that we have to understand when it happened to the greatest degree in our world history and where it still can continue. And it all stems from where we have mankind turning to hate, and we can't have that. I think the best of who we are is when we can attack and address that and raise awareness and create love and appreciation for one another. I did enjoy our visit honoring Principal Carlin Floyd at Woodson. I was fortunate that my youngest son had her as a principal. She is a truly remarkable leader, and it was really nice to have Ms. Seizmarheiser and Mr. Frisch there in our celebration. And finally, I just want to say to my colleagues this evening, I know that this was a tough night after many tough weeks, after really a tough year. And I, I just want to personally express my appreciation for what I felt was a lot of grace, and I appreciate the support for the follow-on motions. And I really look forward to us continuing in our shared work together, always with the best interest of FCPS at our hearts. So, have a good night, everybody.
Ms. Tolan, followed by Ms. Maron.
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on Mr. Frisch's theme of appreciating staff. Tonight, we had appreciation for our CTE leaders. And I just wanted to put a shout out to Rachel Dahmer and Mac Bechtel. They have been working on our jet workforce development team for the last year and a half. And if you take a look at the list of accomplishments that they have, it's really long. They do have, a number of us had it in our newsletter. They are, they put together this instruction to industry career expo event for high school students. A portion of that will be around green careers, but they are covering many, many, many other career areas as well, connecting students with industry professionals. They've done very exciting work around setting up Fairfax County internships for our students with the Park Authority, the Water Authority, Transportation Services. And in addition, in our new contract that we have with our solar providers, they'll be working with the solar providers on workforce development in the renewable and solar industry. So, that is just a tiny piece of the incredible work that they're doing. And, and again, they're a small set of people within our incredible CTE organization. We also recognized counselors this evening. And with all of the social emotional learning and issues that our students have been having this year, I've tried to take some time to visit with our counseling staff and had an incredible visit a couple of months ago with Kathleen Otai and Greg Alcott at McLean High School. And the work that they are doing to engage students and promote student leadership is absolutely incredible. And their work with families across the McLean Pyramid is commendable. Our counseling team at Herndon High School is doing similar incredible work and pulling together, you know, groups on a regular basis to work with our students. I cannot say more what incredible contributions our counselors are making to our school communities. I do want to say too, I got an email today from a very happy parent about his teachers and school administrators that he sent to Governor Youngkin's email and CC'd me. So, I'd like to see more people do that. I'm happy to get your emails, of course, whether they're complimentary or not, about what's happening. But please make sure everyone knows when you have good things to say. That goes a long way. Have a great night, everybody.
So, I'd like to start by welcoming one of our newest teachers in FCPS, Ms. Ashley Ego Dan, who has begun as a sixth grade teacher at Wolf Trap Elementary. And Ms. Ego Dan is actually my daughter's teacher, who has been hired to fill a vacancy that had been open since just after the start of the school year. And she was generous enough to spend some time today, having a virtual meet and greet with some of us parents. And I just couldn't be happier, and everyone was so grateful to her. So, thank you for coming to FCPS. I'd also like to acknowledge Holocaust Remembrance Day. And, you know, I'd like to share, my own children are descended from a Holocaust survivor. They are just two generations apart from that individual. And so, as I reflect on the commitment shared about never letting the Holocaust and genocide happen again, I'm actually reminded of the new friends I've made recently from Afghanistan, who have arrived in Fairfax and enrolled their children in FCPS. I've helped them obtain items ranging from baby clothes to a pressure cooker to a hair dryer, much of these items thanks to the amazingly generous community in Vienna, who in one day filled my SUV with items to donate. I've also helped the adults to, you know, get a job, get employment, to have a sustainable income for, for their family. And I'm blown away by their grace and their fortitude. To look at them, you would never know that they have been through what they have been through. So, commemorating the atrocities of what happened in Europe, you know, almost 100 years ago, is really an opportunity for us to reflect on what we can do now here to stop hatred, to do the right things, and to care about the people around us. On the, more of the school board work front, I've been really excited to advocate for the bills that are in the legislature in our House of Delegates, HB 413 and HB 419, the latter of which is by Delegate Carrie Delaney here in Fairfax, all about literacy instruction, getting that science of reading, getting the funding. There's some amendments in the Budget Committee tomorrow about funding these things. So, I've been trying to reach out to elected members and also other school board members to engage together on that advocacy. And I'm also wearing my Virginia Association for Environmental Ed pin tonight, because there's the bill HB 636 that also is up for some funding, hopefully tomorrow in the Appropriations Committee, to get more state support for environmental education. There actually used to be a state, some state funding for that that got cut years ago from the Department of Environmental Quality, but now we can put it back. So, I really hope that that, that goes through. I'm really glad I'm going to be out in schools this coming week. More and more, I'm getting out there. Cedar Lane School tomorrow to actually go and visit this Transition Support Resource Center program with Administrator Jennifer Knox. And that, it's a short-term intervention program for students, grades nine through 12, that it allows them, if they have significant behavior challenges and needs, to receive the educations and services they, they can then, you know, go on to, to make high school graduation a reality. Then I'm at Terracette, Armstrong, and Dogwood Elementary next week. So, I'm going to caffeinate and have a great time helping out and observing some fabulous instruction. Thanks.
Thank you. If I can call on Ms. Kizgimara, that I, sorry, I skipped. And then, Dr. Anderson, you're next. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I quickly just want to say thank you to my colleagues who mentioned the International Remembrance Day for the Holocaust. I want our communities to know that when one of us hurts, we all do. And we must remember and continue to make sure that our education is reflective of the past so that it doesn't repeat itself in any way, shape, or form. So, my heart goes out to this community who has had some tragedy recently. And we are, my heart is with you. I'd like to also focus on my outreach to parents. I'd like to thank the parents at Woodson High School, who allowed me to be a part of their, the Woodson High School Pyramid, actually, allowed me to be a part of their PTA, had an opportunity also to speak to Title I parents. And the last parent actually is a former FCPS parent who, whose husband was transferred to a small city in Alabama where they do not wear masks. And I found it interesting to receive information that their superintendent, where they have 3,000 students, has decided that they have to go virtual. They're having staffing problems. They can't get substitute teachers, all the things that we've been guarding against. And she wrote me and said, please, Karen, keep up the fight. Our students really need to be protected. They have a lot of infection down there, and they have been experiencing a 4% infection rate of their staff alone. So, I just want, I know there's been lots of not-so-pleasant things said, but I thought that that was an interesting anecdote coming from an FCPS parent who moved that that was an interesting anecdote coming from an FCPS parent who moved to another state where they do not, have not implemented the masks, but have experienced some great difficulty. So I'm grateful to be able to be with my colleagues. I think we're working together, we're learning how to work together, and I wish you all a good night.
Thank you. Like many of my colleagues said, I was pretty disheartened to hear the hotline for reporting teachers, particularly given that the narrative has been, respect your teachers, but respect them, but don't trust them to do the work. This is not a way to treat professionals. And I do want to take a moment to really highlight the professionals that I've had a chance to visit this week. I went to Justice High School on Tuesday to visit Mr. Welch's Avid class. And Avid, for those who don't know, stands for the Advancement via Individual Determination. And its focus, it's to really close opportunity gaps by preparing students for college and success in a global society. And it's really aimed at first-generation students who typically are not clear, because their families don't have the path to attend college and all of what it entails. This class was fantastic, so dynamic. The students were so engaging. And he had two former graduates of Justice High School and also from the Avid program who are students at William &amp; Mary and a recent graduate from Colgate University, who came back to speak to the class about their experiences, all in the name of preparation. How do you get help? What should you do in preparation for studying? What are your responsibilities in college? It was so fantastic, I could have stayed all day. So I really want to say major thanks to Mr. Welch and to Principal Narcisse. I will be reporting you to that hotline for your great work. And it continued. I had the opportunity to go to Camelot Elementary, where I visited with Principal Flaherty, who was so dynamic. We had an extensive conversation about the work that she's doing to her, in her school, around literacy and how she is, has, she's already taken the bull by the horns on ensuring that her staff is able to engage in some deep discussions, some wonderful PD in terms of how to have really impactful, both Tier One and Tier Two instruction. So I was just really, really excited, and I'm looking to go back, and she's allowed me to go back to see this in action. So I am very excited to have that opportunity. I do want to say a very special thank you to the Mason PTA/PTO Roundtable, which I hold every other month, and it was last night. Not only did I have the PTO/PTA leadership, but this time around, we also had the family liaisons and also various parents attended. And they came to hear, not just me speak, but also my, they came to hear my representatives on the various committees speak. We had Harry Henderson from ACSD who presented to the group, as well as Jessica Strelitz from Title I, and also Greg Martin, who is my representative on FLECA. So thank you all so much for your time last night. It was a very robust conversation, and I appreciated having your energy and your time to inform the Mason community in terms of your work and how that's going to impact our students. Just a final reminder that the renovation update for the Falls Church High School will be meeting on February 3rd at 6:00 PM. So please find the link in my newsletter, or if you need it, just call, call the office, email, or in the social media posts. We really want to be sure we have a robust turnout for that, for that meeting. I want to say thank you all for your kind words this evening. It was a rough one, but I think we'll be better at the other end of this, so thank you. And looking forward to us just getting better and becoming a kinder society eventually. Thank you. Good night.
Ms. Seismarheiser.
Thank you, and I just, you know, in a time that's been very, very difficult, I have been excited to see all the wonderful announcements about our outstanding principals and outstanding new principals. It kind of brings back home to me just the amazing, dedicated, creative, and flexible leaders we have and how passionate they are about this work, even despite the last two years. And so it was really wonderful to see Dr. Floyd and be there to celebrate her win as Region Five Outstanding Principal, and I look forward to sort of seeing more as they're announced. And Happy Lunar New Year on Tuesday, the Year of the Tiger. I find it really fitting that people born in this Year of the Tiger are said to act decisively but cautiously, but even importantly, in the face of setbacks, resistance, or failure, they're willing to start from scratch that they succeed. And that seems pretty, pretty, you know, valid for what's going on now. It is also ironically my daughter's and her boyfriend's birthday. So, yeah, she is 12 years old, 12 hours older. Same year. So, you know, it is a, you know, red letter day in our house. Having said that, I, so I wish everybody a Happy Lunar New Year on Tuesday, February 1st. A couple of things I want to announce, because I'm such a fan of performing arts, I'm going to throw out there that Fairfax High School will be holding, will be having Newsies, their school musical, on this weekend, the 28th, 29th, and 30th, and the following weekend, February 3rd, 4th, and 5th. I'm going to try to go see it. It is amazing, from what I understand, so please go check that out. Marshall High School this weekend will be having their musical, Mamma Mia, January 27th to 29th, and so please go check that out. I can't help but dance a little of that, so I hope other people will, too. I know, I know no one wants to see that. And then finally, for the little ones out there, Lake Braddock Chorus is having its children's concert, so bring your kids in costume. They get to hear their favorite Disney songs, meet their characters, and the cost of admission is two canned goods to support the Lake Braddock Food Pantry. So it's a good cause as well. That is Saturday at 2:00 and at 4:00. So come check out all this great performing arts going on. Into a little more of a serious topic, I'll be quick, but I did want to mark Holocaust Remembrance Day and the fact that some of the comments we had today, there's nothing more important than Holocaust Remembrance Day to remind us of the importance of why we study history. And it's so we don't repeat the mistakes from the past. And those who study history know just how dangerous it is and how many times this has been a mistake in the past to ask citizens to report on each other. But most importantly, it is important to understand our history, all of our history, so we can learn from those mistakes and we can learn to help us create a society that is better, that is more inclusive, that is more just, in a society where we don't report on each other, but we come together to support each other and care for each other and uplift each other, including the most vulnerable amongst us. We are only as good as the sum of our parts, and we are much better when we learn and grow together. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I will try to be quick. Congratulations to Ms. Ellen Mackay, the Outstanding New Principal of Region Five in Brookfield. We are extremely lucky to have her in my district. I had the opportunity to attend the Martin Luther King Celebration at Vienna Baptist Church this past weekend, and it was, it was a wonderful celebration and remembrance, you know, of such an important figure who really, you know, who really embodied all those ideals we talk, I think, a lot about on this board that we want instilled in our students and in our community. And there was a wonderful sermon, which I would never be able to do justice, but, you know, the overarching message was while Martin Luther King was an incredible man and who left his mark on our, you know, our society, our world, really what was even more poignant about him was the fact that he was not able, not only able to do the things he did and to inspire, but, you know, that flame that he lit in so many others and continues to light today, to go out and fight for those ideals of equality and love and acceptance. So I, you know, there was a lot of reflecting this past weekend, and of course, as my colleagues so eloquently spoke on National Holocaust Remembrance Day, I think with the recent, with the recent news of the anti-Semitic rise in hate crimes around the country, and recently we saw in Texas, it's also quite poignant to remember that it's the 77th anniversary of that day, and, you know, that is not a long time. So with all the things that we are hearing in our society, I think to continue to talk about that history, to talk about hate, and to continue to work to instill all those values of compassion, empathy, love, acceptance, ability to talk to one another and compromise even when we don't agree are just extremely important. And I will end with wishing everyone, but especially my constituents, a wonderful Lunar New Year celebration. Meetings adjourned.